Jay, you ready?
Is he a service fellow?
Now, the Mentor Town Council meeting of January 15th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Tom here.
Gusty here.
Brian here.
Ben here.
Eric here.
Earl here, and Kate Lee is absent. She's in Ohio, is it?
Go back, guys. Say it.
Okay. So would you all stand for the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have the consent agenda approval. Second, do you have any reason to pull anything? I'll take the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Eric, seconds. Motion by Gusty, second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Next, we have the regular agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make the request that we please pull business item 11D as a dog as staff has not yet prepared to discuss the professional services agreement for an inter- town manager tonight. We're still working through that. I thank Mike Sawyer for his diligence as he gets this done.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda with removing item D under 11.
Second. Motion by Gusty, second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just one clear. We're talking about E, not D.
I think it was D.
D.
D. Yes.
Yeah, I'll put B in that one. Anyway, next we have, does anyone on the board have a conflict of interest with any items on the agenda this evening? Okay. Next, we have public comment.
I have, um, one, I own some property that is somewhat near the Midtown development.
Okay. I guess, should you be recused of that being in the area?
It's not adjacent.
It's adjacent. It's not adjacent, okay.
You're not directly adjacent. Your interests are really not differentiated from anyone else that might have property there, right?
Okay, with that.
No, it's always good to ask.
Yep, it is. Okay, so we're in the public comment section. We have Alex Markells that let us know he would like to come up and talk to us.
Thanks so much. I just wanted to double check that everybody had received the letter that I sent and gotten a chance to write, to read it. I just wanted to, well, first off, offer my appreciation to Scott and Michelle and Madison for helping kind of guide me through the process of understanding the nature of the 30-foot setback, its history, how it's been modified, and this is my, this is my issue. I live, my name's Alex Markells. I live at 624 Main Street. I've been in and around Mentor since 1983, and the protection of the river is really important to me. And I wanted to just expand a little bit on a couple of items that I suggested in the letter. The first about reinstating the high-water mark definition. There's another alternative, which is to extend the setback itself from 30 feet to more than 30 feet. For example, the U.S. Forest Service demands 100-foot setback from any development near a live stream. The county, Eagle County, require setbacks between 50 and 75 feet. So 30 feet is on the short side. And I, I just wanted to say that reinstating the high-water mark is not the only way to address this issue. The only, the other thing I wanted to talk about briefly was proactive enforcement. I understand and accept that ours is a complaint-driven enforcement protocol that it's, that Mentor in the past has not had the resources to be able to, you know, make sure that everybody is following the rules. And the situation with the river itself is that, as we all know, you know, once upon a time when that train ran through, those backyards were loud and screechy, and there wasn't necessarily a whole lot of development along the riverside. Now there's a great deal of development, and the likelihood is that that's going to continue. And the issue that I have with the complaint-driven enforcement protocol in this case is that I've unfortunately been subjected to a lot of vitriol and, um, just stuff that no one should have to deal with. I've been, you know, bullied by my neighbors that I should, you know, if I don't like it, I should move. One of my neighbors, you know, went to the sheriff and asked for a no trespassing order, and in her letter to me called me psychotic. I don't think that folks who stick their necks out on behalf of community assets like the river should have to go through that. And, and I think one of my biggest concerns in terms of finding a way to move forward for the whole community with regard to setback issues is that the, the kind of response that I've gotten from my neighbors is, well, so-and-so down the street has their, you know, their little patio going right up to the edge of the river. Why don't you deal with them first and then come to us? Because we're not going to do anything about it. And in particular, the Eagle River Enclave has just been a nightmare. I first went to the enclave board of directors and asked them to be respectful of the river. They continued to cut down trees, extend their gardens, et cetera, and the, excuse me a moment. Yeah, so several people have pointed to other setback encroachments along the river and asked why the area should, the Eagle River Enclave should be singled out. I've, like I said, there's been name-calling. Even the HOA Board President has publicly stated in annual meetings that the town is too busy with other development concerns, that the HOA will not take action to rectify setback violations unless the town orders it. So I appeal to all of you to, to consider future generations as well as the reality that as development continues and the rail line remains abandoned, that the areas along the riverfront are increasingly valuable. Those properties are going for millions of dollars, and people expect that they should have the right to do what they want on their private property. And, you know, I've had to live with the fact that the swimming hole that my kids grew up swimming in is now off limits to us because my neighbors are enforcing no trespassing in the river or in, you know, accessing the river. The only other thing that Michelle suggested is that I, I know that this isn't necessarily the form right now for a Q and A, so I would request some sort of discussion at some point. Michelle, I, I sent these videos. Are they?
Jay, do you have, I believe Mr. Markells had some videos he wanted to show. Do you have those available?
And if I may, while we wait for that.
They're up.
Would council be okay with having a little bit more of a back and forth with this public comment? Sure.
So this video is, is just an example. These guys are at the behest of one, my next-door neighbor. They're, they're re-wacking everything down to the waterline, and they are cutting the limbs off the branches and in other cases, just taking down the trees because they value the chance to be able to see the river from their homes, and anything obstructing that they feel is, is their right to cut down. Jay, can you send the other one? Start the other one, please. So this is a lovely, bucolic setting. There are gardens and patios, fire pits, and all kinds of what most people would say are absolutely lovely landscaping efforts on the part of my neighbors. The reality, however, is that that's not what a setback should look like. All you need to do is look at the other side of the river. It's full of brush and is difficult to get around, but it provides respite for the animals, the aquatic life. Earl, some time ago, educated me on the importance of creating, what was it, shadows and the importance that the trees have in regulating the water temperature. So this, this thing goes on for six minutes. I walked from one side of the property to the other, and I just wanted to say that, you know, if this is what you want, then change the rules. And, and you might get a lot of support among folks in the town, but this, for example, is a stump of a tree that was cut down just a couple of years ago, and this is right on the waterfront. So, so again, I know that this is potentially picking some ugly fights with folks who have, you know, built their properties along the river, but I appeal to you to help me understand and come up with a viable solution. And, you know, I know that the Eagle River Restoration folks are actively pursuing a countywide effort to, to come up with some common standards along these lines. So, and we do have models for, for how it's done. The Restore the Gore effort has been widely seen as successful, and if you ever walk along the Gore, what you'll find is an actual physical barrier that says, this is the spot. This is the spot that you can't go beyond. I'm not saying that Mentor has the money to do this, but I am saying that it's something that we need to address as a community. I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thanks so much.
Alex, I appreciate your concerns.
So staff will look to the council under the next future agenda items to see if that should be added as a future agenda item for discussion direction.
Thank you. Do you have a question? Our code compliance officer, is that under his purview? Is he more looking at actual building code things, or is he looking at enforcing things like that?
Yep, so Mentor's code compliance is complaint-based, so we have received a complaint on this, and it is now being actively addressed.
Okay. Thank you, Alex. Is there anyone else who would like to make a, have a comment on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, let's see. Okay, we're on to staff reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My staff report is in the council packet. We have a very full agenda this evening, so I'm available if anyone has any questions. I will highlight the excitement of the bridge grant that Mentor received. Ashley Badesh with Sustainable Strategies is here tonight, and she'll be able to go into a little more detail on that. But very exciting that we'll have funding for the design and engineering of the replacement of the bridge. I'm happy to take questions.
I noticed that you noted that Deputy Peterson resigned.
Yes.
Which is sad because I really enjoy talking to him.
Yes.
He's coming around town, and please keep us posted on that. Knowing they're in one of the apartments, is there, and I have no idea how all of this is done, this is purely just guessing. We had discussed as a, when we were talking about the childcare, the possibility of dangling a unit there for a teacher's in lieu of cash contributions. I don't know if that changes now.
And, and that is an option for council to consider when that unit becomes available, which it's my understanding, but not complete knowledge, that will be later this year. Something that council will want to keep in mind is, in the 2025 fiscal year budget, council did approve for funding to hire a public works director, which may also need housing. So just keep in mind, but it is truly at the purview of the council.
And I'm not trying to kick them out either. Like, I don't know if that's even tied to the position or whatever. I have almost zero background on that, so thanks.
Moving on, we have the planning report on the Highlands Parcels Public Process. Sorry, one, one quick question. So on the bridge, unless we have questions right now. She unfortunately attended for no purpose. What am I missing here?
No, Ashley attended for a great purpose. She's here to renew the Sustainable Strategies contract, which is, I believe, two items further down on our agenda tonight.
Got it.
Yes.
Can we throw in bridge questions during that?
I mean. She is right with that. I don't know how technical we want to get, but we also do, if you have bridge questions, have Jeff Spinell on, on the line as well. He's busy apparently eating right now, as would be seen by the video, but.
At least he's got his mouth closed, it's all good.
Yes. So, yes, Tom.
Okay. Sorry, continue. Okay, so the planning report for Highlands.
Michelle, do you want to start your timer? She's going to time me.
We made a bet.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott Hun with the Planning Department. The town recently launched a webpage having to do with the Highlands Parcels 1 and 2, trying to educate the community on why those are really important and why we want to hear people's opinion on those. We just launched a survey, I believe, went out yesterday. I think we've already got some great responses. We're probably, you were at 50 this morning. Okay. So people are getting to the webpage on the Highlands, they're getting to the survey, and we're getting responses. That is all to help us get ready for an open house that will be held here at Town Hall January 29th at 4:30. So we're going to have that open from 4:30 to 7:30. We'll have information, you know, mapping and some similar boards with questions, just like the survey, really trying to understand what the community feels would be the, the most appropriate use of the Highlands Parcels 1 and 2. So that is my update. I think I'm under two minutes.
Yeah.
I guess I'm one of the 50 that filled out the questionnaire yesterday when I got it. One thing I was kind of really hoping to see on there was how the people would feel about selling the Highlands to pay for the water treatment plant.
I tried to craft the introduction to the survey and the questions, not to be specific of sale, but to say that in all instances, it should be assumed that the town's trying to generate revenue from these parcels.
I guess if they didn't know that, they probably wouldn't have put that together on it. You know, I knew it from being here, but, you know, if I was new to it, I might not have picked that up on it.
Okay. Great, great point.
Do we have any drone video of the area to help people kind of understand? Like, there's, there's some pictures, but like, if you don't, if you're not like innately familiar with out there, you don't really get it. Like, we've all had the, like, hiking out there as part of the process and almost getting eaten by a bear, but it would be really cool to have, like, a drone.
There was that. So we do have the father of a drone owner in the audience this evening, so perhaps.
Well, he just left town.
Oh, he just left town. It's so hopeful that maybe we could. So I do think that that would be a great opportunity, both for winter coverage and also for spring and summer coverage, to get those seasonal views of what the property looks like would be incredible. So I do think if, if staff, as we can reach out to any of our drone owners that would be willing to help us with that.
During the open house, I do, Michelle, you had some good photos of the Highlands that I intend to put on boards and have available, but point taken.
A drone would be great to see the big picture.
My nephew.
Oh, okay. AKA my next-door neighbor.
We'll have it next week.
That'd be awesome, Jeff. Okay. Any questions on the Highlands Parcel? Anybody have any questions out there? Okay. Moving on, we have no special presentations, so we're on to business items.
Were we going to do council comments, Mr. Mayor?
Where is that? Did I miss that?
It was on eight.
Yeah, I was trying to skip over that.
No problem. I just had one, that's fine. Otherwise, I wouldn't have said anything.
Tom, you got anything?
Only thing I had was, we had a Mentor and Fitness Center board meeting yesterday, and membership, attendance, and financials is all up and looking good. But the one thing I wanted to touch on, and thanks to Tom for doing this, is the Mentor Fitness Center, every Wednesday is going to go over to the Senior Center, and they'll do like TT and yoga for the seniors, and it's at their site, so I just wanted to pass that along.
Nice. Which after your hip surgery, you can join in. Right, okay. Some may consider this good news, I think it is, but Congress has actually passed the, what was that bill? It's, it's an acronym. Anyway, they moved the program that was on the farm bill where the Forest Service can work with municipalities and jurisdictions that are, that have administrative sites in their, in their boundaries, and it's a procedure where they would lease the land for 100 years to that jurisdiction, and the only price to that is to provide affordable workforce housing for the Forest Service staff. And then everything else is no cost to the town. So for any people that are interested in affordable housing, we will have that discussion in future meetings, but that's a program that we would, we would have a talk with Scott Fitzwilliams at the White River National Forest to, to get that ball rolling. I've talked to him in the past, and he's shown willingness to move that forward if it ever happens, whether the legislature's been passed. Of course, Dow Junction is connected with that as well. So he said that when we sell Dow Junction to you or whoever, we want to get rid of those parcels at the same time that are in town. So somebody's going to be buying those parcels, and it's just a matter of whether we are proactive enough to maybe get control of it or not.
This leasing alternative is in addition to the selling of the administrative land?
Yeah, well, it's.
How do they work together?
Well, that, that's the process. We haven't gotten into the details of it. My understanding is that once we have sat down and done the detailed work, I'm sure your souls will be involved, nothing happens fast with the Forest Service. I've been negotiating with him, along with a few others, since 2010, so, but we're finally maybe in a position to get things done, but the understanding, the basic understanding is you get whatever administrative site that we need to do the, to have room for their workforce housing built on it and any affordable housing that we would like to have built on it, and that may be one of them. I think there's two parcels, Martin Creek and Cross Creek. We have the, you know, the old housing.
And not Dow Junction? Not Dow?
Oh, Dow Junction's all part of it, but that, that's not where we would want to do affordable housing.
But, but in terms of one could.
One could, yes, but.
And you wouldn't have to pay anything for the land for 100 years?
We just house the Forest Service staff, and so.
Plus, you can use it for other people, sounds like what you just said.
Yeah, yeah, for, yeah, yeah, but Dow Junction is where we have a whole different thing in mind, but, you know. So we want to secure Dow Junction, that's in the number one interest, but also affordable housing, I think, for folks in town, give them a chance to own a, yeah, the details I don't have, but that's our program. They did a pilot project in Frisco, wasn't it?
Dillon?
Dillon, yeah. So anyway, just wanted to get that out there.
And Mr. Mayor, Terry Armistead is online and has had her hand up for public comment.
Oh, okay. Terry, you there? Terry.
Okay. Hi, guys, I'm here. Sorry, I didn't know whether to go during public comment or wait till you talked about the Highlands Parcel Open House, but I, I had maybe two questions for council or maybe suggestions. You didn't mention if DOW would be there, but similar to how we talked about the shooting range, it'd be nice to have all stakeholders mentioned in the survey in the group or at the open house, so it mentioned recreation, so maybe representatives from Trails there and representatives from, like Devon Duval from Parks and Wildlife there. And I just, I wanted to kind of maybe look at that parcel, not in a bubble that it may seem to be, but in, as it relates to the entire town and all of the happenings. So, you know, as it relates to Malloy Park, as it relates to all development. And then, you know, just so everybody could, we could have a chance to talk to everybody and see how it all fits in. And then, Gusty, to your point, to have hard numbers there of what this, well, as hard as they can be, but what this would look like and ways to think outside the box, too. And then I wanted to know if you were going to have the results of that survey there for all of us to look at for transparency.
Assuredly so. We'll post the results of that survey.
Sounds good. I miss y'all. Thank you.
You do. Oh, give me your address.
Okay, I'll text you.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Where are we now?
I was just going to respond to Terry. We, I have reached out to Devon. I'm going to be reaching out to Marcia Gillis at the Eagle County Open Space, Jessica Follis with Eagle Valley Land Trust, but I think her suggestions were great. I can reach out to Ernest or somebody at VPMT. Anybody else you can think of, too?
All right. Okay, moving on. Resolution 01, series 2025, a resolution approving the official town posting locations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a housekeeping matter whereby every year we, the town has to approve the official posting sites for the locations in town. We, of course, utilize 302 Boulder Street, the post office wall on Boulder Street. We also utilize the wall over here at 3, no, 301 Boulder Street, 302 Pine Street, and we acknowledge the town website as an official posting site. So the council needs to formally. And we acknowledge the town website as an official posting site. So the council needs to formally adopt those through resolution uh, so that everyone's on the same page with where they can find information coming from the Town of Mintern.
Okay, so this is an annual housekeeping thing, so if there's no questions, we can get a motion, Billy.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one, series twenty twenty five, a resolution designating two public places within the Town of Mintern, the town website for posting of public notices and notice of public meetings of the Mintern Town Council, Planning and Zoning Commission, and other boards, commissions, and authorities of the Town of Mintern.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Eric, second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Now we're on to resolution number two, series twenty twenty five, a resolution approving a business partnership with Eagle Valley Childcare Association.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this came forward to the council this last fall regarding an opportunity to support uh, Mintern's only uh, local childcare facility in the Town of, Town of Mintern boundaries. Uh, as you all know, uh, over a year ago, Pooh Corner closed somewhat abruptly and left quite a few of Mintern and surrounding families without necessary childcare. From there, we, or the Eagle County School District went through an RFP process and secured uh, new services through the Eagle Valley Childcare Association. Uh, they've been working frantically to bring the place up to speed, and Andrea, who's on the call with us, uh, can talk further about that. But they are ready to open or just have opened. She'll, she'll talk about that more. And back to understand if Mintern is interested in considering the business partnership that was presented. Uh, I will say thus far, it has been an absolute pleasure to work with Andrea and their team, um, as they become familiar with our Mintern community. Uh, so I will leave that uh, to all of you to discuss with Andrea. Andrea, welcome this evening. She's online.
Hi, everyone. How are you guys doing?
Good. Good, good to see you. I understand we're about to get going.
We are. Um, right now, we are waiting for an official open date from the state. Um, she did get back with me today stating that there was some kind of technical issue that um, they were getting resolved today, so hopefully we'll hear back by the end of the week. So I'm hoping maybe like Monday or Tuesday, we can officially open.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, Liza's also here with me. She is our interim executive director. Hello, does anyone say hi?
Hi, glad to see everyone.
All right, so uh, we're looking at the resolution now. My understanding is there'll be a one-time payment of five thousand dollars and an annual commitment of twenty-five thousand total. Correct? Or is it five thousand and twenty-five?
No, the one-time payment of five thousand and the twenty-five thousand, as Mike would say, is uh, dependent upon appropriate supplemental appropriations. Uh, so he likes to get those words in as well. Additionally, council had some questions regarding how the waitlist would work at the last council meeting. We addressed that in the memo. But if you want to talk about it directly uh, with the representatives, this would be a great time to do that as well.
I, I had a new question. Um, it's a situation that came up because I met somebody who was in this situation. Are the Mintern slots, um, well, I know somebody who just qualified um, to get their baby into Pooh Corner and they're living in Mintern, but they're also working for the hospital which has reserved spots. Do you get double credit for somebody like that? Or would that, would it be possible for that person not to count as one of the five Mintern people because they would have gotten in anyway?
Well, I'm gonna go, I enrolled families. So out of the seventeen families I've already enrolled, I enrolled close to fourteen from Mintern. So I've went over the five because they desperately needed this. And um, so I felt like maybe we gave them the opportunity first, but how it works is we have our priority listing, which includes Vell Health. Um, it would be you guys. Um, who else? Liza? Liza?
We have um, the Water and Sanitation District, also Town of Avon and Town of Vell.
Okay, and um, so as they tell us they're, they work for these areas, we'll put them in and then we go through and we'll offer the position and then if they deny, we'll just go down, straight down to the next one. But we also have a section where it says Mintern families, and that is also on the spreadsheet that I also look at.
That's wonderful news. Thank you so much for that. Any other questions for you?
So I think like the question that you had about like, would they get double to go in? Um, I typically, when we enroll, it doesn't, it would not count as a Mintern family. Um, it'd probably count as Vell Health, and if we can get another Mintern family in, we would do that instead.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, is there any more discussion or, okay?
The more I'm learning is that these lists are convoluted valleywide and across many organizations, and there's no such thing as absolute transparency into who is counting towards what bucket. I am a hundred percent on board with supporting this facility. I think it's been a shame that it's sitting empty and I know meeting people locally who are like devastated and it's like really, really impacted their lives um, when that shut down for this period of time, so. Thank you for your work getting it back open, and I think it gives us a good opportunity to reevaluate on a yearly basis and see how else we can support you, um, see how things are going. And I guess my question is, is there, are there like open board meetings or ongoing reporting or anything that we should be paying attention to? When it comes to this, are you, do you come in every year and we'll ask for a update to this and give us an update on, you know, how the list is going and how enrollment's going? Or how, how do we continually check in with you all and make sure that this is a successful uh, re-addition to the community?
I know that like, going off like other business partners, quarterly check-ins and go from there. And, but you're welcome to do what works for you guys, and we're, while, we're willing to do whatever works for you, is to check in on that list or to check in on any other app and answer any other questions that you have.
Okay, so you froze. Can you say the first part of that again?
Oh, sorry. We're willing to do whatever works for you guys. I know our other business partners do some sort of quarterly um, check-ins. Since they give us quarterly stipends or whatever, or payments, they ask for like a quarterly, um, would it be a list of what families have been accepted or what families?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I might recommend, the quarterly sounds like a great opportunity, and then add a, and add an additional item that every fall, when it's time for budget season, perhaps have them come in uh, to keep that relationship going face to face.
And, and uh, just for your information, our neighborhood, my neighborhood has always been asking me, when's it gonna, when are y'all gonna get open? Where, you know, they're all anxious, and none of them have kids that would be your customers in, in our immediate neighborhood. But they all want to see the kids playing out in the yard, so we're really looking forward to it.
Is there an open house Friday?
There is. I'm hosting an open house, um, just so everybody in the community can come by, meet my staff, um, kind of look at the place a little bit, because we've done some renovation on it. Um, and just to kind of get a feel for you guys as well.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion of this, I'd appreciate a motion. Make a motion to approve Town of Mintern Resolution Number Three, Series of Twenty Twenty Four. Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Mintern, Colorado, approving business partnership agreement between the Eagle Valley Childcare Association and the Town of Mintern. Eric, second. Okay, motion by Tom, second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
Nay.
Okay, um, so the resolution passes and uh, welcome to our town. And you're in.
You guys. Thank you so much.
So, next is Resolution Number Three, Series Twenty Twenty Five, a resolution approving proposal for services with Sustainable Strategies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we do have Ashley Baddish with us this evening. I have had the wonderful opportunity of working with Ashley for
Coming up on five years?
Five years, wow. For the last five years, I've learned so much more about grant writing through her expertise. Uh, as she has really led the town's efforts in all uh, grant writing and some lobbying efforts on Mintern's behalf. So Sustainable Strategies handles all of Mintern's large grant writing opportunities. To date, they have obtained over five million dollars from Mintern in grants, which we have had the wonderful privilege of having very small grant matches and in some cases, no match requirements. This is really where we are able to have this ability to punch above our, our weight when it comes to capital improvement projects. So it's really Ashley's firm that has been doing a lot of this work behind the scenes to get us the funds so that we can have the sidewalk projects, the pedestrian safety improvements, the congressionally directed spending in order to get the new water treatment uh, plant coming in. Safe Streets for All Program that we're doing right now to get a safety action plan for our roadways. These are all things that have really started with Ashley's firm. So we're incredibly appreciative of what they've done. This money for the contract is already approved through the twenty twenty-five budget. However, we are changing the contract cycle to align with the fiscal year. Uh, because it works better when you're trying to do a bunch of grants and we have a certain set amount of grants that we can work with them if we're aligned in the fiscal year. Ashley happened to be in the area and wanted to touch base because it's been a couple of years since she's seen you all uh, to say hello and talk a little bit more about Sustainable Strategies and the work that they've done.
Welcome, Ashley.
Thank you. My laptop crashed here. Thanks for the introduction, Michelle. Um, I'm Ashley Baddish. I'm a partner at Sustainable Strategies DC. We're based out of DC and Denver, Colorado, and I'm up and down the I seventy corridor pretty frequently. And our firm is, uh, we specialize in grant writing, federal funding consulting, and advocacy for local governments. Um, our Denver-based office works primarily with communities in the West and small rural mountain communities make up a, a significant chunk of the uh, book of business that we work with. And um, we have had great success working with the Town of Mintern since twenty twenty-one, so I guess it's four years, really. But I'm happy to take any questions on sort of what our process is in working with the town. We have monthly calls with uh, Michelle and with, you know, the new C manager. We would continue those monthly calls during which we present a list of grant opportunities that is currently out and available that includes federal funding opportunities, state grant opportunities, as well as any relevant foundation or uh, typically like river districts, kind of other resources outside of the federal and state funding purview that we know align with Mintern's priorities for funding for water infrastructure. We will throw in uh, other opportunities as well that we know align with your projects, even though our focus is primarily on um, funding for water infrastructure, will at least make you all aware of opportunities that become available for parks and recreation, for uh, transportation infrastructure, which has also been a focus as well. Um, and then, you know, childcare, affordable housing, other things that the community might be interested in, um, even if we don't end up pursuing those on your behalf. Um, and then we work with staff and with your consultants on developing the grant application, start to finish. So we compile the attachments, we draft support letter templates, we draft the narrative for the application. Um, and then we work with you all to uh, solicit political support where it's needed for federal grant applications to kind of get them across the finish line. Um, and we're involved every year in your application for congressionally directed spending or earmark funding as well. And yeah, so I have a printout of some of the grants that we've won over the past four years. Uh, if you're interested in seeing them, I can hand it out, um, or just answer any questions that you have. But I did just wanna come say hello because I'm in the area and uh, and yeah, it's been a minute since we've been up here in person. So nice to see you all and happy to chat.
That sounds great, Ashley. Um, as you, you're, I'm sure you're aware, Michelle's leaving us. I will have an interim uh, for the next four to six months or so, depending on the timeline, how quickly we can go, but uh, so uh, I'm sure uh, we, we will have your contact information and we're very focused on keeping your services and uh, working with DM if need be. Actually, I'm sure she'll be interfacing with you, I would think, right? We have so many, a lot of things coming up, and she may have. So you would, uh, so, you know, you've gotten us some projects going this year.
Yes.
And uh, so she'll need to be briefed in on those and uh, and then when we get the, the full-time manager hired, then uh, we'll go through the same process.
Sounds good.
I have one question.
Sure.
It, it sounds like you provide a fantastic service. I, I was just a little confused about how you charge. So there, is there forty-five hundred dollar monthly retainer? Is that forty-nine hundred?
Yes, that's correct.
That's not a charge, right? Or is it?
So that's just a monthly retainer rate that encompasses all of these services.
So, so it's a, so everything is included within that?
Yes, ma'am. So we do.
You never charge more than that?
No, only if, so I think there's four grants included in that like annual retainer that we take the lead on drafting in addition to the earmarks. If we were to exceed those, that level of uh, that number of grants for an annual cycle, then we would potentially come to you with a proposal for additional funding to do additional grant writing. But all of the like monthly call, funding consulting, um, four grants that we write, and then the earmarks are included in the monthly fee.
And in the past, have we ever had needed to go beyond that amount?
We run up against the number of grants that are included in the retainer and then either just kind of paused until the next cycle or renewed a contract to um, kind of restart. So I think depending on, for instance, if you all were interested in pursuing more grants to support a broader uh, number of community priorities, like if you wanted to go after arts and culture grants and public safety grants and, you know, it kind of broadened what you're looking at, I would recommend looking at a different monthly rate to incorporate more grants in the retainer, or we can charge for those on a one-off basis, but that would essentially come in the form of me writing a proposal to say, you know, you want me to pursue this DOT grant, this is what I would charge for that, and then the town would approve it before we write it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Tom, do you have a? Well, since you're here, what's the basics on the bridge, specifically the timeline associated with that?
Yeah, and um, the engineer who was on, I think, is probably your best resource on the timeline on the bridge.
Not unless the bridge, just the funding.
The funding, okay. So through the C dot uh, Bridge Program, we've secured the funding, which is a couple hundred thousand dollars with a match associated that's for the design of the bridge replacement. My understanding is they've reached out, you haven't executed that yet, correct? It's just.
Right, so they've reached out with the award letter that you have a copy of in your packet. We have not yet executed the contract.
Okay. Um, and so in terms of the timing, my understanding from other communities that have worked with this program is it can take a little while to get the grant agreement executed. If that becomes a problem, you all are welcome to, we can try to help support moving that ahead with C dot. Um, I know uh, Glenwood Springs, we won one of these grants for, and it took them, took C dot a little while to get it moving. And Matt Langhorst, who works there, like sits on that board as well, so if, if you do come across any challenges in terms of the timing, let us know. We can try to help with that. And then I believe you have, you know, a couple, I think it's. And then I believe you have, you know, a couple, I think it's maybe two years to complete the project with this C dot funding, once the grant is executed.
And these funds can be applied to that pre-existing bridge. It's also a course of action.
It is potential course of action. As you will see in your packet, Jeff Spinell did an overview of what that bridge would look like in that location. And it is lovely if you want to be on a bridge in the saloon. Needless to say, Jeff said it's about twenty feet too long. That being said, if the council is open to considering other bridge locations, that might continue to be a source of a conversation. Jeff, do you want to add anything to, to that?
Yeah, I sent that, that sketch to the, the C dot engineers that suggested the Dolores Bridge and explained what the problem is, and they're looking at it, and they're supposed to get back to us.
Oh, that's great news. Thank you. It, it was a very exciting opportunity, actually, for the concept of reusing a bridge, saving money and capturing a piece of history all at the same time is something that you don't get to do every day. So we will see how that comes along. It remains an option until we're told it's not. But as of right now, it, from Jeff's schematic, it, it looks pretty tough in that particular location.
So the next step is taking bids on replacement?
The next step is the execution of the contract. So C dot right now on our, on our roadway projects has been averaging about a year and a half to execute a contract.
Great.
That's why I put it in place, New York.
It, it literally, you know what? I won't even, yes, I'll just say yes. Yes.
Okay, so any other questions for Ashley?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to say thank you. I mean, you've gotten us a lot of money over the last four years, and our return on investment for what we pay has been great for the town. So thank you.
It's been great working with you all, and we'll miss working with Michelle here. So thanks very much. And here, I can leave these with you.
That'd be great. And if we didn't have this long, such a long meeting coming up, I'd offer to buy you a few cocktails.
I would second Lynn's point that if there are grant availabilities, you're aligned with our town priorities. You know what projects we're looking at. Like, don't hesitate to bring opportunities to us because we've hit four. I think we're all in agreement there.
Sounds good.
So we have on the table resolution number three. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number three, series twenty twenty five, a resolution to approve professional service agreement between Sustainable Strategies and the Town of Minter for contracted grant services and authorizing the mayor of the Town of Minter to sign the agreement.
Motion by Gusty, second by Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. So next we have business item eleven E, special event liquor permit, Bendu Memorial Fund slash Town of Minter. And so we will now convene as the liquor service, certain liquor board. I'm up to get that. Thank you, liquor licensing authority. You escaped me. Okay. And so first of all, who's going to take it? Jay?
Okay, can everybody hear me okay? This is an annual event. The Bendu Memorial Fund holds a, this event up at the VSSA. We've gotten approval from the VSSA. The, the applicant, Samuel Bennett, is, represents Bendu Memorial, excuse me, the Memorial Fund. He was not able to be here this late. So because the town is also acting as, carrying the five oh one portion of it, we are going to go ahead and.
Jay, we can barely hear you. Can you turn up your volume?
Yeah, let me see what I can do. Sorry, hold on. Is that a little better?
Yeah, much. Thank you.
Okay, let's start again a little bit. This is an annual event. The Bendu Memorial Fund holds this event at the VSSA. It is scheduled for January thirty first this year. And the town is carrying the license as the nonprofit as a favor to them. The intent is they will run the event and we'll carry the license. Essentially, what they've got is one of the local breweries, and I apologize, I don't know the name of it, has gone ahead and donated beer, and so they will sell that at the event. Because of the, there was a conflict with Samuel Bennett, who is co-sponsoring this with us. So I'm going to go ahead and present it as the staff, and I'm going to answer any questions if anybody has any. Everything's in order, and the staff is recommending approval.
Okay, any questions for Jay? Yeah, we have no questions for you, Jay.
Okay, I, I will remind you, it does take a public hearing.
Thank you very much. Any comments on the Bendu project? Anybody online?
No, sir, there is not.
Okay, opposed public hearing. And do we have a motion to approve the special event?
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for the Bendu Memorial Fund.
Motion by Gusty, second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Next is the big one. Resolution number four, series twenty twenty five, a resolution approving the preliminary plan and preliminary plat, preliminary plat for Midtown Village PUD. Who's going to take this one? Scott? Absent?
I am actually taking this one.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So as you just said, this is the public hearing for Midtown Village PUD for their preliminary development plan, which encompasses both their plan and their plat. When I'm talking about them, I do mean both applications together. This is just in general, the, the agenda for tonight, introductions, project overview, et cetera, all the way down to, to Q and A. The applicant, Jeff Armstead with Midtown Lops LLC, is here. And then we have town staff and consultants. We have our town attorney, Mike Sawyer, our assistant town attorney, Richard Wilson Kramer, obviously our town manager, Michelle, Jeff Spinell online, Scott, our planning director, and then our water people, Susan Ryan and Kristy Ratabal, who are not in attendance but have provided letters within the packet, as well as Jim Mann, who reviewed the financials. We sent it out to all of our normal referral agencies, of which I believe there are about thirteen, and we received five responses from CPW, Eagle River Water Sanitation District, Eagle County School District, Excel Energy, and Eagle River Fire Protection District. And you'll find all of those letters within the packet as well. So the applicant originally completed conceptual development plan in September of twenty twenty one and then applied for preliminary plan for PUD in October of, I believe, twenty-two. So we have been, it has been a long haul, but, but we are here to officially present the application for council's determination and hopefully approval with the conditions as laid out within the resolution that's in your packet. Should the council grant that approval, then the applicant will then have to go and apply for final plan for PUD and development agreement as well as final plat. So here's just kind of a brief timeline. As I said, it was originally, the preliminary plan was applied for in October of twenty twenty-two. There were multiple rounds of completeness review between staff and the applicant from November of twenty-two to July of twenty twenty-three. Then we went through referral, the referral process, and the applicant addressing comments between July of twenty twenty-three and August of twenty-four. And then we had planning commission hearings in November and December of twenty twenty-four. This was a duly notice public hearing for this, this meeting tonight. I'm sure you're all, are all aware, but this is the vicinity map of where this is. It's within the nine hundred block of town, and it's bordered by US Forest Service as well as homes on either side and across the street. So it is currently located within the South Town character area commercial zone. It's a mixed-use PUD on two point, essentially two and a half acres, made of five tracts and a mix of forty-two housing units with seventy-four percent deed restricted to locals only, as well as two commercial units. One is the current commercial unit that already exists on the lot in the Old Alpine Glass Building, the Steam Master staging storage area, as well as a potential new, up to, I believe, three thousand square feet closer to the front of the lot that I believe the applicant has been talks of, with the fire district of potentially utilizing that with them. In addition to that, there are also trails along the back of the property and new infrastructure that would service the project throughout. So here's where we get kind of to the slightly rote portion of the meeting, where I, I read a lot of things directly from the code into the record. It, it, it might get a little bit boring. I do apologize for that, but it, it's something that we feel needs to be done for record sake. So the PUD purpose, the purpose of the Plan Unit Development or PUD Overlay Zone District is to allow flexibility for landowners to creatively plan for the overall development of their land and to achieve the purpose and objectives of this code in the community plan. An applicant for a PUD must demonstrate that departure from existing ordinances is warranted and that the proposed PUD significantly contributes to the following. That it provides for new technology and promotes innovative and efficient land use patterns. It permits the integration of land uses and contribute to trails and pedestrian circulation, preserves valued environments and natural resources, and achieves a more desirable environment. It maintains or improves air and water quality. It provides for a wide range of housing opportunities. It improves the overall design, character, and quality of new development, permits the integration rather than separation of uses so that necessary, necessary facilities are conveniently located in relation to each other. It establishes land patterns that promote and expand opportunities for public transportation and trails and for safe, efficient, compact street and utility networks that lower development and maintenance costs and conserve energy. It preserves valued environmental, historic, or mineral resource lands and avoids development in natural hazard areas. It maintains and enhances surface and groundwater quality and quantity. It provides applicants the opportunity to contribute to the town's multi-use trail system to provide and maintain access to public lands and rivers. It establishes incentives for applicants to encourage the provision of long-term affordable housing. It is consistent with the purposes and goals of the community plan and these land use regulations in reference to chapter sixteen and seventeen. So the Preliminary Development Plan Review Purpose. The purpose of the Preliminary Plan Review is for the applicant to specifically respond to the issues and concerns identified during concept plan review and to propose detailed and properly engineered solutions to those problems that conform in all respects to the approved concept plan. The burden at the preliminary plan stage is on the applicant to provide detailed information and mitigation proposals to be evaluated by the town. The preliminary plan shall include a community plan and development guidelines to the development of the PUD here and after the PUD Community Plan Development Guidelines specifying the standards and limitations that will guide the future development of the property. And here are the approval criteria that I'll go through that y'all will need to make either positive or negative or just don't need to make findings on, should we get to the point where y'all make a decision tonight. The resulting development will be consistent with the community plan, and the proposed PUD reflects the character of the town. The area around the development can be planned to be in substantial harmony with the proposed PUD. The adjacent and neighbor, nearby neighborhoods will not be detrimentally affected by the proposed PUD. The mass and scale of individual buildings and the overall density of the PUD shall be, sorry, shall be consistent in scale and character to avoid abrupt and or severe differences with the surrounding area. The PUD can be completed within a reasonable period of time, which shall be determined prior to final approval of the PUD. The PUD provides for the appropriate treatment of the Eagle River Corridor as a community recreational amenity and focal point. The residents of the PUD have easy access to recreational amenities. Any increase in density proposed above what is permitted in the underlying zone shall be mitigated by increasing the land dedications to open space, recreational amenities, or other public facilities and services. Any proposed commercial or industrial development can be justified. The streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic, and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area. Proposed utility and drainage facilities are adequate for the population densities and type of development proposed. Residential density and intensity of other uses shall be limited as required by the town council upon consideration of the community plan, the official zone district map, and the specific characteristics of the subject land. A favorable, a favorable finding is made on the environmental assessment or environmental impact report. The preliminary plan for PUD shall comply with the following open space and recreation standards. And I apologize, it's a minimum of twenty-five percent, which the applicant does comply with. So potential areas of conformance. It does generally conform to the community plan and town's growth management policies. Staff and the planning commission believe that it efficiency, it exhibits efficient land use patterns integrated within and informed by the existing town fabric. And the plan permits a range of housing options, including deed-restricted price cap units on locals-only housing plan in excess of the town's housing requirements. The plan is located to take advantage of public transit services. It's, I believe, within a hundred feet of a bus stop and to contribute to the town's pedestrian infrastructure. It's currently along existing sidewalk and hopefully with the, the new implementable phase of the sidewalk project, we'll be able to access further south. Utilities are available and service lines are in place or in proximity to serve the project, and the plan appears to meet the town's character and compatibility standards. Currently, you'll notice that within the suggested conditions of approval within resolution four for the town council's review, you'll notice that we have broad overarching categories of suggested conditions. We, we have not gotten into, you know, the applicant should do this on page X. It's the applicant shall work, shall work with town staff and consultants to address the PUD guide and narrative, to address any concerns about the preliminary plat and obviously the subsequent application of the final plat. That the town, or that the applicant should work with the town on bringing civil engineering and site plans up to construction-ready drawings. As I'm sure you're aware, with the other PUDs that have been processed in recent times, preliminary plan is not where you see a hundred percent construction drawings. It's typically where you see anywhere between, I believe, fifty and seventy percent. And so things will inherently need to be still hammered out as we get to final plan and the, the plans become construction-ready. And actually, we, we added a condition and that a note should be put on the plat concerning water availability. So that is, is where this outstanding issue comes from. There is one variation request, and that has to do with setbacks. Within the South Town, the rear setback is supposed to be ten feet, and the applicant is requesting that the rear setback along the apartment building be five feet. And that was recommended for approval by the planning commission at their, at their last meeting, where, at the last meeting where they, they heard this application. So, which is a good segue into the planning commission discussion. So there were four main topics of discussion at planning commission, especially at the first hearing. The second hearing or the continuation of hearing to the second meeting was really the applicant responding to all the, the comments and questions posed at the first meeting in regards to setbacks. As I said, the applicant is requesting a five-foot relief from the rear setback behind the apartment building. And the, the planning commission discussed the fact that at that portion of the property, it is surrounded by Forest Service lands along the back and the side where the apartment building would sit. And so they did not feel like it would be detrimental to grant that five-foot relief. The, there was discussion of snow storage, and the applicant provided an updated snow storage plan as well as showing where there would be snowmelt along the driveway into the apartment complex so that it would be more easier to understand where the plow would go and the plow route within the development. easier to understand where the plow would go and the plow route within the development. The, another discussion point was landscaping. So staff had initially flagged that landscaping could be a potential variation request. Uh, upon staff's initial review and getting the staff report ready for, for planning commission. It was, uh, staff realized that while there was some landscaping due to the size of the project and the amount of units being proposed, uh, and the acreage that there was nowhere near what, uh, staff believed that there needed to be. So staff originally believed that there needed to be a hundred and ten trees on the property. Which, as I'm sure you can envision, is a lot of trees. So, so since that was a discussion point at the planning commission hearing, the planning commission asked the applicant to go back and come back with a much more detailed landscaping plan showing where any vegetation might be. And so the applicant, uh, did his ask and he produced a, a new landscaping plan, which you'll find in your packet in the civil set. And that now, uh, it does not show a hundred and ten trees during the, the planning commission discussion. Uh, the applicant brought up a, a great point that there are several, there is a section within the town code that exempts commercial lots from having to abide by the landscaping regulations. Now, this is a little bit of a, a weird situation because he's not necessarily, the applicant's not necessarily creating lots. He's creating five tracts, uh, so there was some back and forth on whether or not we needed to just apply that exemption, if you want to call that, even though it's technically in the code. Uh, to a percentage of a tract where that commercial sat. Uh, but the, the applicant came back with a very robust landscaping plan showing, uh, several, I think seventy trees? Ish, and then many, many shrubs. So within the intent of the landscaping requirements, staff and the planning commission believes that the intent is made, uh, is met. By having all of those trees as well as the shrubs. Now, staff did flag that maybe the, the choice of trees that's currently being shown might not be the best, as some of them I think are a little bit more flammable than others. But the applicant has demonstrated that the intent of the landscaping applications or landscaping regulations can be met and will continue to work with them on finalizing firewise and waterwise plantings within the, within the project. Uh, and then the last main point of discussion at the planning commission was parking. So initially, the, the applicant had stated, okay, here's how we're meeting parking standards, X goes to, uh, the apartment building. X goes to the steam master building, X goes to et cetera, et cetera. However, it was, it was difficult for staff and the planning commission to truly envision how that would work. And so the applicant came back with a color-coded parking plans stating, here are the regulations, here's what's, we're being, here's what's being provided. And so that assuaged any of the, I, I believe that that assuaged any of the planning commission's fears that there weren't, wasn't enough parking being provided. Uh, and also helped staff better understand what was being proposed throughout the whole project, not just in phase one. So as a summary, the concept plan was supported by the planning commission. Uh, the preliminary plan does reflect the concept plan, very little, if hardly anything has changed, uh, between the concept plan and preliminary plan. The town has received in most cases sufficient levels of information and plans necessary to review conformance and make positive findings. There do remain outstanding issues that will need to be addressed prior to or concurrent with final plan and final plat application. And you'll note that there are several conditions within resolution four that, uh, will address these outstanding issues. Uh, and so staff and the planning commission have forwarded or, or well. Staff recommended the planning commission, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation of approval with conditions of both the preliminary plan, the preliminary plat. And I will make note, you'll see in the staff report that the planning commission did forward a recommendation of approval of the amendment to the zone district application that was included with preliminary plan as is required by the code. That you need to apply for this at this, at this stage. However, upon conferring with the town attorney, given, let's see, that the zoning is not official until final plan and plat, it doesn't quite make sense to change the zone district if there's no actual zoning to go along with it at this time. So while the planning commission has forwarded a recommendation of approval for that, uh, staff, if you'll notice, has not provided an ordinance in the packet to deal with that. And we will, uh, we are planning to, to officially take action or provide it to you to officially take action at final plan. So y'all have the, these are the four kind of ways tonight can go. Y'all can approve it, you can approve it with conditions, which is what planning commission is recommended. You can deny it, or you can continue the applications to a date certain. If y'all would like to, if, if there are additional questions that you would like the applicant to come back with answers to. Or if you just don't feel that we can get through the whole application tonight. So that is presentation on Midtown Village.
Thank you, Madison. Is, do we have any questions for Madison?
Gussie's got a lot written down.
I've got a lot written down, but it'll probably be more for Jeff, not a whole lot, but no, nothing for Madison.
Okay.
All right.
I have actually a question, this is maybe a little something, that you're, the landscaping requirements? Yeah, actually, I had no, I'm glad I'm new every day. We actually, do we require developments to put in landscaping that would require permanent irrigation? Yes. That seems.
In, in a way, yes. Our, our landscape requirements, uh, for residential development are one tree for every thousand square feet of lot area. So if you take a typical five thousand square foot lot, the minimum is five trees. It could be an aspen tree that needs very little water to get established and then just goes, or it could be a number of other tree species, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And so, uh, while I'm at line, uh, the irrigation system, I'm assuming that will be a separate water source separately from the in, inside, inside use, so that we know what is irrigated water and what we know is not. As we did in Minter North.
Jeff, I don't know if you have any thoughts on, on that just yet, but that is what we did at Minter North. I don't know if that's part of Jeff's plan, but.
It is, I mean, we have, my understanding as long as I've been here is that Minter North's no different other than maybe they ask for above and beyond. But an SFP allows, I believe, three thousand square feet of lawn.
Two thousand, two thousand.
Two thousand? Okay.
So just from a accounting point of view, it's nice if we know what is, what amount of waters they can use for irrigation and what is not.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and there, I don't think it's in there anymore. Um, there was, uh, a lot of, uh, information in my narrative, or maybe it was an addendum. Um, that had a breakdown of the usage. And it kind of, I think, might have been a little too detailed in terms of, it was leaning towards breaking down SFPs into percentages of SFPs. And I think under the recommendation of our town attorneys, that language needed to be removed from the packet for now because of outstanding litigation. So I think that that's a future discussion, maybe. But, uh, we can get into what, in phase one, what we're proposing to water or not water and what that would be. I'm happy to, you know, go over that, but, um, to Brian's point. It's a little bit counterintuitive, I guess, or maybe that's the wrong word as to the way our code reads. Where on one hand, we're trying to promote using less water. And maybe promote more zero scapeing or promote landscaping that uses less water. And yet, the way things read today, there's a certain amount of maybe trees that have to be planted that might have to have water for a short period of time. Or they might have to have water all the time, depending on what species you use. So, um, personally, I know that what I'm trying to do or proposing to do is use less water in general.
Thank you.
Uh, less green, less water, less grass to water, less everything. So, um, that's definitely the intention of this entire PUD is to use less water. And stretch the water that we do have further as much as we're allowed to do. That's as politically correct as I can say that.
Good answer.
Uh, so any questions for, for Jeff?
I might have a couple for Jeff. I read in there where it showed like, uh, it was increased density from eleven point three units per acre to, uh, sixteen point six. Is that mainly because of the sixteen plexits there? And you're getting a lot of units on smaller.
It's really just a function of the overall number, you know, the forty-two. I, I want to point out that because of the, because of the fact that we don't have enough water, obviously, to, to support the whole thing. There's three units that are included in the forty-two that are, were always talked about or proposed to be above the commercial building. The future commercial building on Main Street. If that became a fire station, I don't think those would be really units per se. They would be, they would be just beds for environment and women to sleep in. So I think that number of forty-two units versus thirty-nine units is a little gray. Depending on what happens with that building someday. And so the minute you take thirty-nine, you, you start dividing the number by thirty-nine. In the density, all of a sudden it comes down to about fifteen. In that range, which I think is the same as Valen Place, pretty much, the density as far as fifteen units per acre. I would point out that there was a, there was a housing, uh, there was a future land map, a twenty-thirty future land map that was done back in two thousand and nine. And it references that area of town to be medium density residential, which is ten to twenty units per acre. So this falls right in the middle of that.
Then I, I didn't see where you had the rusting trail. Is that just going to stay dirt? Like, it, okay.
Kind of like the mini mile.
Yeah, I was kind of just a little concerned with in the springtime and then with, uh, rains, you know, and people out there walking, you know. It's gonna be their units, but they'll probably be tracking it in, so.
Well, it's, it's not just for them, it's really for the town, you know, it's really kind of, there's a couple spots where someone could walk down the sidewalk down Main Street right now. And the sidewalk kind of ends right, the, the old sidewalk project ends right there. But if you walk another block and a half, you can go into Martin Creek through the actual trailhead access. Um, but it was always proposed to be a place for kids or whatever to get off the sidewalk, walk along the fence line. Get to the back of the property.
Get a little bit in the nature.
Just a little, it's kind of like, my kids would call it like the secret way.
So it connects to the.
To Martin Creek.
Behind.
Yeah.
The only other thing I had was, and it's just a comment on the rear setback that was where your sixteen unit is at. Usually I'm not a fan of, of variances, but where that's at, I don't, I, I feel the same as what planning and zoning did was nobody's ever going to build behind it, you're not going to impede on anybody there because it's buttoned up that force, so.
Yeah, I mean, maybe according to what Earl said tonight, maybe it's going to become affordable housing someday.
Not the field bike, but you know, back up against the hill, I don't see him ever, that's a pretty steep hill there, so.
Yeah.
Yep, but I really, I, I like everything on it. I had a lot of questions and as I went through it, they got answered, so it was pretty well laid out for us, so thank you.
Jeff, I have just a question, I apologize if I missed it in the, uh, report, but do you have kind of a plan for electric vehicle hookups and that sort of thing?
Yeah, there's, the plan right now is to take the, the entire roof of the apartment building is projected to be a, I think it's a hundred and eighty-five KVA solar, um, array. So we're, we're proposing to use that for, obviously, the building itself. Uh, I have a lot of, um, solar ready, earning electric vehicle chargers in the garage for that building itself. And then potentially have more, you know, electric vehicle. All of the units are proposed to be, um, at full buildout, including the, the smaller homes, the condos, whatever. They're all proposed to be EV ready. If, if the town homes get built someday when there's water, then, you know, they, I would assume they would have solar arrays on the roof as well.
And then, uh, another question just on the phase two for the micro homes. Is that, um, is that a phase two because of water availability as well?
I would love for us to find eight SFPs somewhere, so we could do those homes, but.
No, that's good, no. I, I personally, it's a, a thing I think our town's needed for a long time. Um, that's, it's, I can't think of a better option for locals to be able to afford a house, um, in Minter, so.
Yeah, I mean, because of the size of them, obviously, in our, in our, we don't really have anywhere else that we allow small lots like that. So this is kind of the first time that might be reality, hopefully.
Yeah. Exciting prospects, so.
I would, I, I want to build them tomorrow.
And I just had a question, someone, um, wrote a letter and they expressed concern about the fact that there's only one point of entry. If there was a disaster or in the morning, whatever, you'd have all these cars lined up. Is that a concern for you?
I always, we always wanted to have a loop in and out, and C dot said no. So the, the issue was, we have two points of access now. Where, uh, and C dot said, we don't want that anymore, but, um, there's a, the point at which we were going to have the, the loop. There's supposed to be a breakaway fire gate for a fire truck. So you theoretically can get out in an emergency through there. It's just, they did not want, they wanted to, they obviously, as you guys know, they can't stand how many accesses we have on mains, on their, on highway twenty-four as it is. Their standards typically are a lot greater for how many feet you go before you have another one. And because we had twenty-five foot wide lots historically, that's why we have so many. So they said no. They wouldn't grant us a permit.
Be worth appealing and, you know, we are a narrow, such a narrow mountain valley, there's no.
I know. But from a safety, to your point, from a safety issue, I think that there will be a way for people to get out in the, in an emergency through what is the fire breakaway gate. And I've, I've done projects before that have those. And you're not paved, let's say, all the way to Main Street, but you certainly could get out if you had to.
The sixteen units in phase one are those informally already claimed for employee housing for certain businesses, yeah?
No, um, I've been at a point now, unfortunately, um, for, I don't think I had gray hair before we started this project, but, um, until we get through hopefully this process, I, I don't, the, the employers, Vale Health being the biggest one. The timing of talking to them and getting a commitment out of them, it's like, bring me something when you have something that you can really talk to me about instead of just talk. So, um, there's a couple other employers that, that we're looking at, but Vale Health is the biggest one. And, um, there, if we, when we get through this, they're my next call to see what the timing is, because it's all, they've done a lot in two or three years with investing in other parts of the valley. Minter's unique to them because of the, the radius of what their certain employees have to be within a certain radius of the hospital.
Yeah.
So, um, when I started talking to them, I think they were subsidizing, uh, their employee rents to the tune of like three million dollars a year. And they were dealing with like sixty landlords, different landlords. And they wanted to obviously shrink down, so.
On the five-foot setback plus the adjacent's property, got it, but what's the, what's the total clear zone in that area plan? In regards to the fire prevention?
Well, we would hope that if and when anything ever got built, if the Forest Service sold that land and it became something and they started to want to build structures back there on Martin Creek. They would obviously, I know, or, uh, fire department typically wants at least ten feet between buildings to be able to get ladders up. Um, and that's kind of like what our Minter and side yard setbacks are now. Um, so we would hope that anything that got built, there was at least another five from the back of the building, minimum.
But there's no, I, I apologize, there's no vegetation, trees or anything in that stretch on that plat that I noted?
Yeah.
Okay. And you already delineated the C dot reason for the entryways and we really have no recourse on that?
No, I, frankly, I hate to try to go toe-toe with. No, I frankly, I hate to try to go toe-toe with them. I mean, the, the project initially had a D cell lane, I think, which Michelle was not very in favor of. And when, when we went back to the water and because of the fact that we don't have, that we can't do full buildout right now, the, the traffic study was revised, we looked at it again, and that took away the need to do the D cell lane, you know, at full buildout someday. If and when we get water, there may still need to be a D cell lane, according to CDOT. We'll see when that happens. They just took the, I think they took the opportunity to say, if we can eliminate another access point, we're gonna do it. Kind of like when we studied the speed limits and wanted to reduce them and they ended up raising them.
I don't have any questions, I, I would just like to say that in general, I think the reason this valley in a lot of North America is in these portable housing troubles and missing middle housing is because we're holding up development through NIMBYism and excessive coding and everything like that. This is like, to me, I walk to town council for my house and I pass single-family homes, I pass triplexes, I pass a tiny home lot right across the street. And this couldn't be more to me, like what exactly we're trying to hit with the plan? So hopefully, I trust they are, but hopefully staff is a minimal to the community vision. I think it's on us to keep moving these things through, because I think this is like what we're trying to hit with affordable housing. And I would also say, we are committed to resolving the water issue. That's what we're working hard on, so. Adding more, adding more affordable housing, I think, is a priority for all of us.
Thank you. Well, yeah, I mean, the minute the, the town gets more SFPs, those tiny homes, smaller homes are the ones that are gonna get built next. I have friends that want them, I, I have, I would love to put teachers in Malloy Park that are gonna be displaced someday in them. Honestly, with, with the market being what it is right now, even though the apartments are on the edge of what the market will bear, you know? And that's, we're currently renting at about a hundred and thirty percent of AMI right now, and that's not very affordable. It's just not for most people.
We need everything.
So Jeff, there's, y'all have, as usual, the PUD has himself some outstanding issues y'all that still need to be worked on. You gonna be ready when the time comes for the final review?
Yes.
I, I want to congratulate you, this is the first really locals project I've seen. And it's probably coming from a local builder, so.
Well, I, I wish we could have gotten it further along when the, when the interest rates were a little lower, but. I'm really happy to be in front of you now, and I, I thank Scott and Madison and Mike and Michelle, you know, this has been a long time coming and unfortunately, the water is what it is. And it, it added to the, you know, the difficulties of getting here, you know? Trying to design a project that is what, what it will be at full buildout, you know? It's a very unique situation we're in, and so it's, it's been, I'm just really glad we're here.
You have been working hard on it for a long time, and hopefully we'll get, get things moving on the water side of things in the next three to five years. And get going on it, we'll see.
Any further questions for Jeff or Madison?
Thanks for everybody and the hard work on this, a lot went into it.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll open it up to the public. Do we have any interest from the public? Questions for Jeff or Madison? Anybody out there, Jay?
No, sir.
I would like to say, Mr. Mayor, that you did receive, or well, we received at Planning Commission Point, and Lynn did allude to it, that there is a public comment letter within the packet that was provided for you from an adjacent, or well, across the street property owner, Mr. Bob Sipoff.
Yes, you want to read that into the record?
I certainly can.
Go ahead.
Okay. So this was sent on November thirteenth, the night of the first planning commission meeting. Hello, Madison, regarding this evening's planning commission meeting on the mid, Minter Village PUD, we have a few concerns. The request for setback variance as a homeowner at nine sixty-two Main Street and having recently completed a house renovation, we are adamantly opposed to granting a setback variance. We were restricted significantly in design and siding options due to our strict setbacks and utility easement. The owner developer of Minter Village should be held to same standard. We were held to stringent setbacks on the river, side and front setbacks. These developers should not get the variance for setbacks, even if it abuts open space similar to being restricted against the river. In addition to variances for setbacks are the significant concerns regarding traffic flow out of a single entrance to the entire development. With forty-two units with at least two bedrooms, it's potentially four cars per dwelling unit, which equates to a hundred and sixty-eight cars for the residential units total, plus the cars for the two commercial spaces, which will have constant traffic to them. The placement of the proposed commercial slash fire station being on the opposite side of the development from the other commercial space. Both commercial spaces should be placed on the south side of the PUD closer to existing light commercial in this area. Moving the proposed commercial slash fire department building to the south allows for a separate second or third entrance for the development, which provides a safer and more dedicated access for service. This PUD is proposing a single entrance to the entire development that has significant impact to traffic flow not only for Minter residents, but for all of those traveling from Bloodville through Minter. Has CDOT done a full traffic impact study for this PUD? At minimum, the development with this density of residential and added commercial space should be required to have two, if not three, points of egress for the development. Regards Bob Sipoff.
Thank you.
Close the public comment? Any more discussion from the board?
For that letter to CDOT. As this resolution is written, it already has the additional conditions built in, correct?
Yes.
No, I don't have any other questions. So we'll make a motion now.
Go ahead.
Down in during Colorado, Resolution Number Four, Series Twenty Twenty-Five Resolution Approving the Midtown Village Preliminary Development Plan for Planned Unit Development and Preliminary Black Land Use Applications.
I'll second that, along with adding the conditions.
Okay, let's do a roll call on this one.
Tom, I.
Let's do I.
Ryan, I.
Lynn, I.
Eric, I.
And Earl, I.
Earl, number two.
Number one. Actually, he's about to hurl number two hundred for you, but hey.
It's a big one, so we're gonna be back for the final. Tomorrow? As soon as we can. I would, it'll be, it'll be a little bit probably, but. We'd like to break ground in the, in the, in the spring with, the sewer is the biggest issue. That's gonna be one of the tougher.
Are you gonna do all of the underground infrastructure in phase one?
We have to.
Oh, you have to.
I mean, the majority of it. There might be some stubs that go to like the tiny homes for water, because there's a, not to get into the weeds on the technical side of it, but all of the storm water, you know, that site, that's the old Quintana Lot, it's the old Alpine Glass Lot. It sits, the back of the lot sits probably six, seven feet below the road. So, and there's no storm mitigation on it. It's also, you know, a lot of water that comes off the hillside. So for the first time, it's gonna have its own storm water mitigation. And there's a lot of underground structures that have to get put in to take that water. That's something that's gotta be done on the front end. There's a new water loop main that has to come in and all the way around, so that they can feed the water from both sides. We've already done, some of the, we've taken down a lot of the overhead Excel lines in there already and then put in some transformers, some underground transformers to service the existing commercial building. So to answer your question, there's a lot of that that has to go in before anything else can happen. And in Tom's point, you know, shopping it to the, the employers in the valley and seeing where their temperature is on, Vale Health is gonna bite on it or not. The school district, Eagle River Water and Sand, there's, there's some other larger employers, Dale Resorts, obviously, but we'll see how that goes. Thank you, guys.
Michelle?
I want to thank you. Good luck. Michelle's done an incredible job. I've seen a lot of town managers since I've lived here, and you're the best. And it's good to see Mike.
Here.
Oh, and speaking of that, actually, interior already knows, but for the public at large in the town, we are having a farewell party for Michelle at Crazy Chicken on February sixth, the day before she packs up. Ends out into the sunset.
That's gonna be a tough drive for you the next week.
She's gonna get a horse just to do that.
So I'm gonna have to get somebody else to drive her. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Next, we have ordinance number one, series twenty twenty-five, first reading and ordinance amending chapters sixteen and nineteen of the Minter Municipal Code, adding flexibility options for historic preservation of structures.
So at the meeting where the one fifty-one main and one fifty-five main structures were approved, as well as the last ordinance dealing with seven different options to hopefully provide additional flexibility for people with historically designated structures on their property, staff and the HPC was, or Historic Preservation Commission, commonly known as HPC, was given direction to bring back additional flexibility options. So that is what this ordinance does. It also provides for a kind of housekeeping thing, so it, it does, it's not just flexibility, it is also a housekeeping thing by providing a process for somebody to remove themselves from the historic register. Whereas previously, it was, it was in our code that you could do it, but there wasn't hardly any process attached to it. So hopefully, Planning Commission Chair and HPC member Lynn Teach found a section of code from Buena Vista that provided more process to it, so you'll, you'll see that in the ordinance. But the, the bulk of the ordinance is in regards to flexibility. So as you'll see, there are things that amend setbacks, as well as lot and impervious coverage by five percent each, should you have a historically designated structure. I want to emphasize that we have had the historic preservation process slash program for over two years at this point. We have only five structures that have been designated. We are currently going through Historic Resource Survey and hope to get additional insight on initial in-depth insight, not just overviews, of ten additional properties within the Old Town character area. So in total, potentially fifteen designateable slash at the end designated properties. Once you get through the whole process. And it was, it was a great point of concern at the Planning Commission meeting that this ordinance was heard at, that this would unduly affect a, a large portion of Minter. And I, I do want to assure everybody, given the progress of having properties designated over the last two and a half years, I believe, I, I do not believe that this will affect many people. Honestly, if, if somebody has a historic structure on their property and they might not even want to take advantage of this by building in addition or something like that, that would then help take advantage of the, the reduction allowed in setbacks or the allowance for additional impervious or building coverage. So I, I don't want you to see this ordinance and think, oh, everybody's going to go out and start building two feet into the side setback or, or ten feet into the rear setback, barring any live stream setbacks, or five feet into the front setback. I, I don't want there to be any kind of misconception that, that this is going to affect a large portion of Minter. This is specific to historically designated properties, of which we will likely not ever have very many within town. It, it's, it's something that, being historically designated, while it does have benefits to it, you can get grants, you can get tax credits through the state and federal government, things like that. However, it is, it is a lot of extra work on the property owner's side to procure those things, as well as having to abide, if you want to get those things, you do have to abide by the Secretary of Interior's Design Guidelines, which we no longer have adopted. We just divert to our, our own design guidelines. But if you would like to take advantage of all of the resources available to you, you do have to be held to that higher stringent standard through the state and federal government. Saying all of that, I mean, y'all were the one who, ones who gave directions, so I'm sure, sure you're very aware. But HPC forwarded this ordinance with a recommendation of approval because even if it only helps just one person, that's, that is worth it to them to provide additional flexibility per council's direction to come back with those things of additional flexibility. So if you'll see in the ordinance, chapter sixteen, the only thing that changed is asterisks added to the dimensional standards table that correlate with an asterisk under the table saying that if there is a historically designated structure on the lot, there may be relief available via section nineteen five fifty. Going further down the ordinance, you have, when you get to chapter nineteen, Article Four, that is the, the process kind of housekeeping section of the ordinance that I mentioned earlier. And then you get to Article Five with an entirely new section added titled Historic Preservation Incentives. So as you'll see, there are six, I'm sorry, five different incentives slash flexibility options that are, that are being proposed. Three of them have to do with setbacks. This ordinance currently proposes that you can build into the side setback, no closer than three feet to the property line, but not to allow structures to be less than six feet apart. In the front setback, structures can be constructed no closer than five feet to the property line. Again, not to be with more than, closer than six feet to an additional, to any structure on a neighboring lot or within your own lot. And then in the rear setback, structures may be constructed no closer than five feet to the property line. Again, not to be constructed closer than six feet. And we are not proposing any setback relief to the live stream setback, obviously. And then the other two incentive slash flexibility options that are being proposed is a five percent increase in maximum building lot coverage and a five percent increase in maximum impervious surface area. So as I noted in the memo attached to this ordinance, the HPC did forward a recommendation of approval. However, the Planning Commission, and they reviewed this because there was a change, chapter sixteen forwarded a recommendation of denial. So that is the ordinance.
Thank you, Madison.
First of all, I want to thank Historical Preservation Committee and all the work you did on it, Madison. I kind of feel like we're kind of putting the cart in front of the horse trying to do this right now because we have this consultant hired on to evaluate which properties is, you know, could be historical. And here, we're already kind of coming out with some new guidelines for it. I do support Planning Commission's denial of this, it was unanimous. And they are basically our recommending board. And I look to what they have to say because, you know, they do the, the planning and zoning on it. I understand, you know, that it probably makes spot zoning, which is kind of hard to keep track of, so I'm not in favor of that. But my personal reasons is, it might be great for the person that's wanting to do it to make their place a little bit bigger, get a little more square footage out of it. But what impact is it having on the neighbor that's right next to it? I mean, you're impeding into their area more than if it was five feet instead of the now going to three. I feel it defeats the purpose of preserving the structure when you're adding to it. You know, we're trying to preserve the seventy-five-year-old plus structure and not encourage to add on to make more square footage. And the last thing I feel is it's very important, we've seen what's going on out in California with the fires. I know the wind caused a lot of that, but I heard Jeff actually even say the fire department likes ten feet for their ladders to get in between. Well, if we move it down to three feet, they're never gonna. Well, if we move it down to three feet, they're never gonna get in there with their ladders to fight a fire, or if you even have to get up on your roof to do some repairs, so I just, I, I appreciate you guys looking into it. I was under more of the impression of looking into what you'd mentioned, like with grants, and trying to find ways that you can help offset your costs, maybe with paying taxes or any way, but being that historical to save them some money, but not really trying to change the dimensions of the structure and our zoning, so that, that's my feel on it.
Thank you, Gus. Tom, you got anything?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the Planning Commission doesn't review this, right?
The Plan, since this ordinance also changed chapter sixteen by adding the asterisks within the dimensional limitations table, the Planning Commission did review the ordinance.
Did review that.
And, and they forwarded a recommendation of denial.
Do any owners of historically designated properties have any feedback on this?
There was no public comment at either meeting, oh, that's a lie. Michael Boyd showed up to the HPC meeting to give comment, but since he's also in the Planning Commission, I don't know. He doesn't, he's not an owner of a historic, doesn't make shots here, so.
I know you're.
Yes.
So, so, am I right? The four buildings designated after two years consist of the two little Victorian houses on Main Street, and the shed at the Old Meyer Place, and Water Tank?
And the saloon.
Oh, and the saloon. I don't know, I, I, I'm in favor homeowners being encouraged to designate historic properties, and I think when the historic properties were originally built, they were built pretty tight to one another, and those setbacks didn't exist. So, to me, it makes sense.
I, I, I think, you think these incentives will help preserve the historic structure, because there's always the option just to, just to scrape it, of making money off of it, of there you are, selling property, or making this decision, or developing it, like what's been going on with the houses that are just sitting there, not being sold, and not being put with any businesses in there, because the rents too would be too high, the square footage costs were exorbitant. Giving them the ability to do a little bit to these structures, building on behind them, a little bit on the sides, I'm, I'm not in favor of the front fifty percent of the structure being added on to, but the rear part of it, and this will vary from lot to lot, right? Because it's, we're looking at different structures, but I think the front, the frontage should be preserved, and then allow more construction, employee housing, whatever, on the back part of the lot. To, to not allow these kind of options to be available is basically saying we're just gonna have some very old buildings that aren't being worked on, and, and, and not invigorating our town's commercial structure. Also, I believe the fire department would rather have no setback with a direct connection to the building next to it than have a five-foot setback where they've got to go in between these two homes and try to put out a fire that could, 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 where a structure could fall down on them. So, I think it's a safer thing to, because they don't, they don't like to go into narrow, narrow areas spaces to try to put out a fire. So, I, I don't, I think the fire department would, would not be having a problem with this. I, I don't see, see a major, I don't see a major impact, and I, I do see the ability of preservation that could be involved into, end up being a good thing for the town in the way of improving them to the point where they have a viable business in there, and, 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 you know, we need more commercial spaces, so just having these things getting scraped is not good, because it loses the character of the town, so I won't support it.
I'm in support, well, I'd rather just round ban this whole entire section of code, but anything that weakens it, in my point of view, is, I'm all for, because I think this just is gonna, we're gonna look back at some of these designations that I think regret it, because we're gonna end up with vacant structures that are just sitting there with no investment, so I think we should allow them to do even more, but I'll vote for this, because.
But the way this code is written, it isn't just Main Street or commercial, it's actually could be somebody up with their house up on four hundred block. This isn't just one hundred block.
Yeah, but I think if a homeowner gets unduly burdened with a historical preservation thing that they don't want, then we should be giving them, it shouldn't be a restriction. Like, if somebody came up to you and said, hey, sorry, Gus, you know, you don't want this, but we're designating your house, and you can't do anything, now you're designated.
No, I agree with you on that, yeah.
I don't think the government should be stepping in.
I don't think so, you're right, I agree with that.
Doing that in the first place, so I'm gonna say, like, let's, let them do, I think they should be able to pop the top and redo it, and do, I think they should be very, be able to be very creative, not scraping, but very creative in how they interpret historical preservation, and I think they should be doing a lot more of things, so.
Yeah, I just have a problem with the side setbacks, because I just, I, I know if I had a neighbor and I think, decided that they're gonna add on the back of their place, and next thing you know, they're three feet from my property line, you just impeded on your neighbor. I mean, I don't like that, I really don't. I mean, I just feel that we, we're catering to some people to make their life better, but you're ruining the neighbor's life.
So maybe that's a disincentive to make that a historical preservation, so maybe the neighbors will all fight against carrying them, their property into.
Yeah, and I don't want to see neighbors fight. People like Minter for Minter. I don't know why we're always so adamant on thinking we're gonna change the code. Before long, our questionnaires are gonna come back saying, hey, I don't like Minter, because I liked the Minter ten years ago, and I just, maybe I'm old and set my ways, but I just, I think, and then I think we're doing a, a disjustice to our Planning Commission when they unanimously voted against it, and we're, they're basically our guiding department that gives us recommendations, and we don't support them. I've been in the Planning Commission years ago, that's why I left. I had two projects that we denied, went to council, got overturned, and left planning and zoning. I don't want to see our Planning Commission all get upset over this and leave, because we overruled them.
Well, I, I, I think this is preserving the Old Town, not.
But we did that, when we did that with the back portion, when we passed the last seven things, this is just adding more to the setbacks on the sides, which is actually more doing spot zoning. I'm not against adding on what all we agreed to last year, I'm all in favor of. I'm not in favor of cutting back on the side setbacks more, I just think that we're doing ourself disjustice doing that.
So what about the back fifty percent of the property?
No problem, because we've already passed that.
Yeah.
We already passed that, now we're trying to add more to it. I had no problem with them wanting to build on it, I understand you have to do that, and it's probably gonna happen to the two places downtown that we just nominated, which is fine, I just not in favor of getting it more dense, and having less setbacks, putting more impact on neighbors, and it might not just happen there, because it could hap, you know, I think right now we're kind of focused on downtown, but this, if this passes, it's the whole town, it can happen anywhere.
That, you, somebody has to designate a house, right? And quite frankly, I don't think that's gonna happen very, hardly at all.
But it could, it, it definitely could, and then what's it gonna do to the neighbor? I would feel better if we had a way out for the, the neighbor that it's impeding on has some say in it, saying, hey, this is gonna put a, you know, put a burden on me, and they should be able to have a say, but the way this is written, there's nothing on there that says that.
Well, I agree with you on the, on a three-foot setback on the front of the house, because that changes the character a bit, more than I would like to see, but I, I would, I would approve this if the three-foot setback was just for the back fifty percent. I don't think that'd change, because you're walking down the sidewalk, and you're looking at one fifty-one main, and, and you're looking at that house, you're not seeing it build out.
But the neighbor would, I guess that's my concern, it's the person next door, you know, if, that's, that's what I'm worried about. I don't wanna, something's happened at the other end of town years ago, and it should have never, ever happened, and the neighbors, the person that owns the land that's next to the unit, has been suffering ever since. And I don't want to see that, I don't want to discourage our people that live here and enjoy it here to pass something that is gonna make their life more miserable.
I really don't see that happening, I mean, everybody on these, every, every review board that we have are made of citizens of this town, you know, they see, I don't see historical designations happening to any scale that you're, you're thinking about. Like I say, there's hardly any other structures that are still standing that could, could possibly be appointed a historic designation, and, and, and quite frankly, they don't have quite the, the nature of history that the ones that are looked at, looked at being designated have. So, I doubt it, if, if the owner didn't want it to happen, and the neighbors didn't want it to happen, I doubt that we would see that happen, be getting approved.
I just wish we had something to state in about the neighbors, we don't have anything on that. Pretty much a way of states is, you know, we're encouraging the owner of the property to be able to basically benefit off of it, but not the neighbor.
It's a benefit, but the owner also has to put up with keeping the building structure as its, and it does hark back to the way things were originally, when those buildings were in the old pictures of Minter, the, the buildings were right next to each other, and we do allow setback changes for PUDs when there's a, a social policy that's important to us, and maintaining the historic part of Minter, I mean, I agree with Earl. We have to make it, if we want those buildings to be developed as we would like to see them, we need to make it practical for them to do that, so.
So, there's also public notice, you know, and then, do we have it like we do other remodels or instruction as far as giving public notice to any residents in the area?
So, for the designation procedure, you send out, rather, the secretary, which is me, sends out notification to adjacent property owners and post in the newspaper, however, a sign isn't posted to the property, because in the cases of nominations where the property owner isn't in support of the nomination, we don't want public notice to constantly be done wrong, because the property owner could go out and take the sign down that's on their property. So, we, we just send out adjacent property owner notices and newspaper postings, but we don't do the sign. However, for certificates of appropriateness, which is what this would be doing, I'm, I think it's the same, I don't think we changed, but I'm, I'm looking. Public hearing shall be conducted, yes, okay, so, all of the things it, with the public hearing being conducted and notice being sent out in accordance with the designation procedure, so yes, same postings will, or letters will go, be sent out, a newspaper posting, but, but no sign.
You know, really, you know, how many buildings have historical significance in Minter that were worn, that were built in the forties?
I'm, I'm not saying that we should give up on the buildings, I just don't think we should be giving as much concessions, we already passed the one concession, which I thought was good, I'm just not in favor of moving over another extra two feet.
But, but they're going to be very few, there's so few.
But there could be one that could ruin somebody's life forever that they live next to, because I'm not just talking Main Street, this is the whole town.
Well, might be a benefit to the person next door to have that building built.
But if they build right up to, it wouldn't be a benefit to me if somebody built two feet from my property line.
That's your way.
I would like to point out that within nineteen five fifty as proposed, it does say the following incentives and assistance may be granted by the Historic Preservation Commission when associated with a request for certificate of appropriateness approval, so it's, it, it is not an automatic granting. So if, if neighbors did come out and were adamantly opposed to, obviously up to any kind of pending HPC board, and then, as Scott just pointed out, any development in town, even if it is on a historic property, does also have to go through the Planning Commission. Now, that doesn't mean that they can necessarily override chapter six, or chapter nineteen, because that, that's not their purview. So if a certificate of appropriateness is granted with those relief from setbacks issued, then I believe that the Planning Commission just kind of passed.
So, it was really a detriment to the next-door neighbors, because of where that particular building was located, it probably would not be allowed.
The HPC does not have to grant it.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on this?
One thing I do support on that is the part that was, I don't know why it was hooked all in with this, but it was the removal process, you know, that came from Buena Vista, but, you know, it's kind of part of this deal, you know, I guess you can always approve one part of it, and not the other, but.
Well, I, I would be interested in a modification to, to have the three-foot setback be on the rear fifty percent of the lot, and not the front. And that's your stronger.
No, I'm on the back too, Earl, I'm not, I, I'm all of it, I'm not, the, the front's not gonna change, because they can't change that, that's why, we're talking historical here.
Yeah.
That has to stay, the front has to stay, no matter what, that's why it's nominated. The back they could add on to, my problem is, is adding on to it with giving more of a setback, that's my problem. Just, I had no problem with what we approved last fall, with the back fifty percent being able to add on to, to make it work, you know, financially, and, and they could live in the upper portion, you know, all that, that we, those six or seven point, bullet points that we approved, I'm fine with, I'm just, now we've even gone farther with this, is the way I feel. And I, I'm feeling that it's not the right move, I just gut feeling I'm not, not in favor of it, so everybody else can vote in favor of it, but I, I'm not, I just, and I, and I really feel it's doing disjustice to our Planning Commission, who unanimously denied it, and they're basically the board that gives us direction, you know, what they do, and, and we're going against them, so I'm not, I don't like doing that neither. I, I've been on P and Z, I've had that happen, and I don't like it, so.
Well, that's, you know, we're all adults here, and they, they understand different points of view, I'm not worried about Planning Commission, they do good work, and we don't have to agree with it. Now, did you get any input from the current owners in the one hundred block that are going along with the historic preservation?
I did not, no.
Amazing, isn't it? Okay. So, there's no more discussion? Public comment?
Oh, yeah.
Over to public hearing?
I had to plug. This is so much fun, um, yeah, cool, to McMahon, Avon. So, just to give me a correct, from what guys are saying, planning zoning unanimously said that no, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because I know when we were talking about the polls, Earl, you said something about how you'd like to see the room filled, because there's a lot better decisions made when it wasn't just the seven of you making decision. So like, P and Z is more people than just the seven of you making decisions, and they probably did a lot more research and concentration on this than you guys did, and so it just seems silly not to follow their recommendations, that's all.
You could say the same thing about the Historic Preservation Commission, they probably did a lot more research and work on it than the Planning Commission did on it, and. And planning commission didn't follow their recommendations. And, um, I assume the decision by the historic preservation commission was unanimous, so, you know.
Anyway, okay, uh, Jay, anybody out there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments? Spencer, you got it?
Just Spencer.
Spencer, fine. Close the public hearing.
So, do we have a motion?
I don't have the language before me, but I would move to, um. Approve the flexibility, historic preservation flexibility. And I don't, if, I would move to approve, um, ordinance number oh one, series twenty twenty-five. Ordinance of the town of Minter in Colorado, amending chapter sixteen and chapter nineteen of the Minter Municipal Code.
Okay, um, okay, motion by Lynn, second by Brian. Roll call, please.
Um, may.
Gusty Day.
Brian, aye.
Nana.
Eric, nay.
Earl, aye.
We all.
I'll change my vote today. I don't really care. Honestly, like the chapter nineteen should be lit on fire and set, so I don't, don't mind. Change, no, don't pass it.
The motion fails. Ordnance number one does not, what?
Well, I changed mine, I'm saying.
Excuse me, sir, could I ask? I'm having trouble hearing it.
Oh, that's right, we only have six people.
And then you change.
Your comment about lit on fire noted.
Thanks.
Yeah, me and Joe. Our building code should accomplish what we're trying to do here.
We're good. We don't need to quibble about two feet.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, ordinance fails, so we move on to ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-five, first reading. An ordinance amending chapter sixteen, article seventeen of the MM Minter Municipal, the municipal. What's MMC stand for, damn it? Minter Municipal Code, thank you. In regards to cutoff time for holiday lighting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief, um, after an illuminating, pun intended, uh, discussion on November twentieth. Uh, regarding the town's exterior lighting regulations, specifically. Uh, grilling the town planner on what our definition of holiday lighting is and festoon lighting. And the pros and cons of, uh, how those both work within the town and keeping Minter Minter. Um, council gave staff direction to come back with, um, some clarity. Uh, so we've produced an ordinance that clarifies what holiday lighting is. Uh, I've separated out a new definition for festoon lighting or cafe lighting. Something that a lot of people have on their back decks or might see down in the one hundred block. Um, and then the last direction was to, uh, create some time limits, uh, on holiday lighting. Not necessarily, um, the season, but the time of day. Uh, sunrise to ten PM, I think is where we arrived. So that is what this ordinance, ordinance is trying to accomplish. Um, and that's it. Um, just as a recap, holiday ornamental lighting is exempt from your lighting. Um, regulations. Uh, the definition that I've provided does add some bookends to holiday lighting. So it should be temporary, it should be, uh, related to, uh, recognized holiday and it should be seasonal. Festoon lighting is something else entirely that can stay up year round and so on and so forth, so. That's all I have. Planning commission recommended approval.
So at the risk of getting things, things thrown at me. On the west side of the valley, sunrise is, uh, early. And on the east side of the valley, it's later. So when is sunrise? Whenever it hits your house. We've gone around this freaking circle enough. I couldn't help myself. I have nothing. It looks great.
I agree.
Open up a public hearing. You got nothing.
Nothing about the lights.
You're tired of it too, aren't you?
Yeah.
Jay? I'll take it as a no.
Sorry, the mouse wouldn't work. No, nobody in the audience.
Uh, do we wanna sit on this for another half hour or so?
Nope. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-five. An ordinance of the town of Minter, amending chapter sixteen, article seventeen of the municipal, Minter Municipal Code.
Second. Motion by Gusty, second by Tom, roll call.
Tom, aye.
Gusty, aye.
Brian, aye.
Nana.
Eric, aye.
And Earl, aye. Since we have discussion items, this is consideration to amend the short-term rental regulations to require two-year residency instead of ownership. Indeed. So. Uh, we are looking for direction to the staff on what to do. Please make it so. I would agree. Make it so. Anybody, this is, uh, so that people can't build a house that lives, don't live in town and start renting it out. After, yeah.
This would be prospective, not perpetual.
Right. So they have to live in it before you can get to, what our short-term rental could be happening.
Yeah, cause the, it states right here, like, it was kinda confusing at the first. It says, required two-year residency instead of ownership. Should it be like both, ownership and residency? Well, I'm just thinking in case you have a renter that's got a long-term lease with somebody for five years or whatever, then they decide they're gonna short-term rent it and they don't own it.
I, I think this is the clarification that the council needs to give staff, which is, so if. Someone comes in, builds a new house. And then they long-term rent it, you know, year at a time for two years, does that count? To allow them, then if they decide afterwards to short-term rent it? Or is it really you, the owner, has to live in it? And then what do we do if a company builds it? Because you all, just because you all.
We're still lost.
Did, does this, do other communities have this residency requirement?
We, we did a quick look and there are a few places in Colorado that have, uh. Let, let's call it an ownership requirement, that in, in ownership and. That you have to use it for primary residential purposes for a couple of years before you short-term rental. So how about this tank then? You, you have, they own and built a house. They have to, have residency in that house for two years before he can short-term rent all his garage apartment. Okay, so, and at that point, if he wants to long-term the, the house, well, what's wrong with a long-term resident? So that, that, that's kind of the point is that, that, I think the way that housing specialists look at it. If you build a new house and you live there, or you build a new house and you long-term rent it so another family can live there. You're providing more housing. As opposed to if you build a new house and you immediately short-term rent it, you're not providing more housing. And it, and, and in the discussion that I had with Michelle, it seemed to me the intent was, we wanted this incentive. At least for some period of time before how new housing became short-term rentals. That it would be used for residential primary housing for a period of time. So the only question on that is the language of specifying that it's their primary residence. If I build a house, I turn around and I long-term rent it, it is not my primary residence. And, and again, that, that gets at the distinction, what, what is the goal here? Is the goal that you actually want the owner to live in the community for two years? Or is it that you want the owner to provide some residential housing for two years? The objective in this case, then I would submit is that the house is built, well, whatever. And is used as a primary resident for a minimum of two years.
But what, what happens if it is a corporation that owns an apartment building? How does that work?
Well, I, 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 I don't think it's so much gonna, going to be an apartment building. It's going to be someone who. Puts the property in the name of a trust, or for whatever reason, they put it in the name of an LLC. The other thing is, is if they don't have to live there, that means a speculator can come in and buy up all. You know, build spot residential houses, build them in town. So, and basically, he's got a rent machine going, long-term rental, couple more years, you're getting short-term rental out of it. And the, the inventory could just turn into a business. And, 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 okay, so.
Beneficial owner, they beneficial, you know, we, we get around and trust, um, we'll see.
So, a- a- again, the, the question is, what, what is your goal? Is the goal to provide housing for a couple of years? Or is the goal that you really want to create an incentive that when new housing is built? That people become members of the Minter community before that house is then later potentially used for a short-term rental?
I would add another one, which seem like the two-year housing, I think, or the two-year limit was like one of the most forward thinkings. I don't even know how long ago that was passed. But whoever was on council, awesome, was that you? Awesome, because I think that's, I truly think that's saved Minter from the similar fate. From a lot of the other communities in the valley.
Other than the holiday lighting.
Yes, yeah. It's like, it's, it's honestly like saved us and I don't know, we, we bandy about what, like eighty percent, seventy percent occupancy levels here. Um, and you compare that to the rest of the, belong to, or full-time occupancy here and you compare that to the rest of the valley. And they would like love to have that in places. And I think it's, it's provided a, it's kinda sent a signal and. Set a disincentive to people to come in and buy houses on, in Minter, just to turn them into short-term rentals. And to me, I don't think it helps if it's occupied for two years and then turned into short-term rental. That just kicks the can down the thing. I would say if the goal is to keep that eighty percent-ish, or if seventy percent full-time residency in town. We should stop looking, leave this two-year thing, it's done great, but I think we should say, like, look, we've had fifty licenses available or whatever it is. We've maxed out it, whatever, thirty-five it seems like. Let's just cap that and say, that's good. That seems to be what the market's bearing. That seems to be what people in the community survey are saying. Is like, we're at a good number locally. It's supporting business, but it's also not becoming crazy. Let's cap it at where it's at, and then we can turn around and look at, um, separating out. Short-term rentals that are truly beneficial to affordability. So say somebody wants to build a house. And the only way that they're ever gonna be able to afford to build this house is to have a, a lock-off one bedroom that they're gonna short-term rent while they're a full-time resident. I think that should be allowed because that helps create a housing that's, I hate using the word affordable, but it, it helps get people into houses. You know, that we, we wouldn't be able to live in Minter and afford our place if we didn't long-term rent our, a, a, a portion of our house. And if somebody wanted to short-term rent something, if, if they couldn't build something that allowed a long-term rental lockup. But if it's just like, it made more sense for them to have one little room, we should let them do that. That's, I think that accomplishes a goal we're trying to get as a community.
I think that should be a separate requirement, different requirement when you rent, uh, when you live in a place. And you rent part of your house out. To me, that's a completely different issue. And, but maybe we can solve the other problem by excluding those people. But require to rent the whole place out short-term, you have to wait three years.
Just say, cap the number, I, I think we've gotten to the nice spot. Let's cap it. Let's just like say it's good right now. We've got a, it seems like community survey told us that. People like the number we've got.
I don't think there's an need to cap it, quite frankly. I mean, we're not, we, we just need that key. Well, okay, so short-term rentals can do a couple of things. One is, for instance, I have, I changed my garage into a two-and-a-half level VRVO. And had my daughter and her husband live there for a summer so we can kinda get a feel for what it's like. And they said, well, we wouldn't live there because it's too small for a long-term rental. It's got one loft. It's got a kitchen open into a small living room and, and nothing on the ground level except the door to go upstairs. And no storage. It's not capable of a long-term rental.
So I think you've made the perfect point. Like, that, we need those and they're functioning very well. What, I think the community has told us, we don't want more.
Well, the thing, the, the other thing is, is we need beds in this town for our businesses. We have, I mean, we have a whole, we get, we're basically five stars, you know, on everybody but one renter. Over the last two and a half years, and that is four. Uh, so, and they all say, Minter, what a great town. I went to, I went to the Thai place, I went over and had barbecue at Curdie's and all the restaurants. And I went to the yoga studio when it was open. This, this is a, an economic driver. Uh, and so why, why cap that if it's not?
Because I lived where it's not capped and it sucks.
Yeah.
Well, go live in Eastville, you do not live there, and no single one, buddy, there's no cap. Everything was short-term rental, they're coming and going nonstop, and that's what could happen.
Before we get into this circular argument any further, I would just throw out, there's already two things. Mike already delineated. What's the point of this guidance? Two, we already have a mechanism in place to cap short-term rentals. We have a number. Now, if we wanna argue what that number is, considering five, six, seven years down the road. The number of residents in Minter is not gonna be what it is today. So, I, I would disagree, there does need to be a cap. We already have something in place, so why mess with it? Number two, it still circles back to the fact, you, what you want to have happen after you've lived in that house for two years? You can make that happen, assuming there's a slot available.
I'm just going back to our community goals.
And that is, but that was.
Occupied housing.
I, I got it, but the community, what they want goes in line with what we have in regards to a restriction on short-term rental. As far as total number of licenses allocated, correct?
Uh, the community survey says the total number of licenses, I think it's the current number of short-term rentals. I don't think the community survey, if you ask people. They're saying the current number of short-term rentals.
It's ten percent or fifty, whatever is less.
Yes.
And if, have we been driving pretty consistent? Have we changed much over the years or is it about the same?
You know how many short-term's we got?
I believe.
You were genuine.
I believe that we've hovered consistently between twenty-five and thirty.
I just, we're about to add five hundred.
Exactly, and I'm saying if, if right now the number in the books is fifty, correct? And if we're about to double the size of this town. Fifty's about reasonable, ten percent. I mean, like, because again, Brian, you, you, you're, you're shaking your head no, but you just said, you just pointed out your example.
Yeah.
Or Earl's example, that you, you're, we're trying to divide categories of, of short-term rentals all of a sudden. One is individual unit, full house. Yours is a fraction of lock-off, whatever, same with Earl's. You're in favor of that, right?
I'm in favor of people being able to have, yeah, small lock-offs and full-time permanent.
And so that still falls under that definition. So to say, stop at thirty-five, twenty-five, twenty.
I didn't say that though.
You just said cap it, and I'm saying fifty is adequate.
Separate out those two and cap full house, short-term rentals. So Earl's wouldn't even.
I would love to see us try to manage that.
I think communities do. Breckenridge has a very similar one, Aspen has a very similar.
And, and Breckenridge and Aspen's staff size alone is astounding compared to this little, I, I'm just driving, trying to be realistic. And the reality is fifty, based on the projected growth of this town, is adequate for now. Just as Madison already noted, we haven't even hit, we fit fifty percent of that, as of right now.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to listen to the community survey, so.
And, and I would say that's in line with the community.
So if I can just identify that the community survey from April of twenty twenty-four. The question stated, do you think there are too many, too few, or just the right amount of short-term rental properties in Minter? Fifty-nine percent of the respondents said there are either definitely too many or probably too many short-term rentals.
This is what I'm trying to address and we saw that.
And, so they would. And so they would, they would be against the ones that exist now. They are not, I would, I would throw out their, the community response then, if you're gonna, if we're gonna die on that hill, would say there is no difference between the short-term rental, a bidet house, and a whole house. Is it short-term rental?
You could also conceivably, um, just not permit in the future short-term rentals unless it's part, the owner lives in part of the house. Um, I think that's what a lot of communities.
But that, but again, we're, we're quibbling, and if we're gonna, if we're gonna sit here and focus on the survey, great. But I will tell you that the survey alludes to all short-term rentals. You are now splitting it out. I'm not, I'm not arguing for or against, I'm just telling you, if you're gonna focus on the survey, that means single-family home, that means lock-offs, that means anything that is a short-term rental. Fifty-nine percent of the people in this town think there's too many.
So then, I would a hundred percent agree with that then, keep them all in one pile. I think that there are people who own short-term rentals that are, would get a little weird about that, so I think you gotta.
Well, they're, they're grandfathered in.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
Okay, so let, let me ask a question. Michelle, how many complaints have you had about short-term rentals? Have you all had very many?
This year?
Yeah.
Um, I get them not very often. They're in the more residential zones than commercial areas. And usually it's about trash, parking, or snow removal.
Not, not noise, or?
No, but I would say that they're not that many.
Well, a lot of them don't come to the town, they go to whoever's managing the property, so we.
You know, this, we, we could have a.
That's true.
We could have a, a public, um, open house, invite people in, and get specific, and see what people want, because the survey is very general, doesn't tell you very much.
I think that's kind of a knee-jerk reaction that people have, short-term rental, the one near me.
And I think you'd hear a lot of negative on it, you wouldn't see a lot of positive on it.
But they might, you know, in terms of whether we want to make a different kind of distinction between the owner living there while they're renting it or not.
Well, but that goes back to the crux of this memo and the guidance that's being asked. The crux of this memo is simply one component, and that component is, do you or do you not agree with a minimum of two years of that property not only being owned, but resided in by the owner of said property?
Yeah, let's go back to that real quick.
That's, that's, we're not, we're not talking about the other piece of it this time.
I, I, I kind of feel like we need more thought going into this.
We do, this is just one.
Yeah, that's why we're discussing it.
That maybe we're not ready to do this.
So, well, currently.
What?
Currently, you, you have, you have to own the property two years, right?
Right, I mean, we're not ready to add that additional requirement.
So, if we have a situation where someone had owned the property two years, am I getting this right?
They owned the property two years, they built the house, then they immediately short-term rented, then the neighbors complained, and the council requested this be brought onto a discussion.
So, so they're not counting the build, they're counting the time you owned the lot?
Yeah, we wouldn't have brought this on our own.
Oh, oh, thank you. That seems to me, it, 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 it seems to me that this shouldn't start until you have the CO.
Well, that's what's in this package, so that's why I'm saying, this is one component. This isn't us coming up with a comprehensive policy. This is one component of a comprehensive policy. So back to the question, just as noted in the example in here, do you or do you not agree with they need to have their ass in the house for two years?
I'd say yes, because that, they've said they're local. We want locals.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it'd be a little stricter with having them living in it for two years, so I'd be in favor of that, because I think otherwise, you know, they could just buy it and rent it out or whatever, long-term rent it for two years, and then after their two years is up, they could turn it into short-term.
The reality is that it takes two years to build a house.
That's, I don't know, if that can start, you're not starting well, you're in the house, you're talking about physically living in it.
Right, 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 that's what I'm saying, under the current system, and it, it wouldn't apply to new property owners otherwise, because it takes two years to build a new place.
Although, yes, with five years. We got two for five.
But, good point for Tom, we're, we're not dealing with capping or anything like that, because it's not part of the agenda. We're just dealing with this. So it is, uh, so, and I think the, the, the point is, is do we allow an owner to not have to live in the house that he just bought for two years, but rent it long-term, and then be able to short-term his garage apartment?
Also, if you're talking residency, you've got, that's another issue, because, um, I know some, but it might be a second home, so they're living there, but they're not voting residence for two years. Do they have to be voting residence for two years? Um, do you mean the legal definition of residency, or do you mean living?
Well, you don't have a short-term rental, then if you're gonna do a vacation home, you're just out of luck for a short-term rental.
Yeah.
That's, I, I think that's a pretty good policy, actually.
So we do need.
If they can afford a vacation home in Minterne, they don't need a short-term rental.
No.
Since.
Spence, do our.
Open it up to public hearing. Oh, wait, does this, no, nevermind.
I thought your name was just Spence.
Just Spence.
That's your middle name?
No, written on my name tag, actually, just Spence, uh, four, four, four Eagle River Street. Um, so, we all sort of agree that the current policy is working, because we haven't hit a cap. It allows some tourism in town, it allows people to own their homes for the extra income. It allows for a little bit of growth in Airbnbs along with the growth of the town. So, what, if we have one person that skirted it, why go through it at all, if it's currently working pretty well? Unless you want to spend more time.
Well, yeah, but, but, that, that's how the conversation went into an area that we was not.
And even, even with the, the two-year residency, I'm talking about that, it is the first step, and then everything else past that. If we have something that's working pretty well, do we start needing to litigate every little case going forward?
Well, I think there seems to be, based on continual reference to the twenty-twenty-four survey, that it's not working well according to fifty-nine percent of respondents.
Close the door on your way, that's what everybody does. I don't want them to go to renting, I got my home. I don't want them to build either, regardless of whether the density of the workforce is happening. So unhappiness is gonna be.
It's a, it's a theme. Uh, for that, I would say is part of the answer.
I agree, but if it's working pretty well, I would probably stick with where we're going, on all cases.
That's for the record, that's why I win.
I mean, there's only two of us, we both got to talk.
Come on, it's only a four-hour meeting already. Um, two quick things. One, uh, actually, three quick things. One about you're with a long-term rental. When I first, the first two months I lived in the valley, I lived in a walk-in closet next to the bathroom above beer liquors, uh, four hundred dollars a month, I mean, you can't beat a hundred dollars a week. Um, so, people will live in a very small place in the valley if they need to. I mean, ski bums that are, you know, groomers at night and skiing all day, they just need a place to crash. You know, and a full bedroom fits in a walk-in closet, or a full mattress fits in a walk-in closet, and you got about six inches for your shoes, so, golden. Um, second, uh, Vale, when they just redid their STR stuff, um, they have a residency clause, so kind of like what you guys are saying, um, which I think is awesome, you know, if you live in your place and you need to rent out a room, short-term rental to make your mortgage, but you're now a local that's living there long-term to make a place, that's awesome. Like, we need to encourage that. Um, basically though, what this does with saying, I mean, the way I look at it, just is like, looking in from out here, how it's saying you have to live in it for two years. I understand why you're saying that, but it's basically saying you had to live in here two years, make a commitment in two years, and with a residency, if you're living here two years, you gotta be a resident. You know, six months plus a day or something like that, and you're a resident. Um, you know, that's gonna discourage anyone like, what you're saying, corporations coming in, buying a property, and all of a sudden you have a lot more STRs with no, you know, no income really staying in the valley, and it's staying in Minterne. So I mean, I like where you're going with it, but I mean, call it what it is, it's just, it's to discourage, you know, corporations, encourage locals to buy property here, discourage corporations coming in, which is good. I'm not saying that's bad, that's awesome. But, you know, call it what it is.
So my, my thought on this one was, um, I mean, first of all, I want to see lights on in the community, uh, it's, I think that's very important. We have, I live around the five-hundred block, there's a ton of houses that are just completely vacant, because people don't want to rent them, they don't want to deal with it, so it's, it's just, it kind of ruins the community in that respect. I very much want to see, I think having a two-year residency is important, but I do want to have a distinction on there that if you are buying a house and you want to be a local here, um, you can start short-termining a single room immediately. Um, I don't think, I don't want to put a two-year cap on that personally, so, but you do need to live in the house, uh, before you can actually short-term the entire house after two years, if that's the goal.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
I like that distinction.
Nah, I, I don't think short-termining an entire house makes any sense, or if you're in a hotel there, your neighbors aren't gonna like you very much. Unless you're, because you're not gonna be in the neighborhood, right? No, uh, having a, an owner living in the house for two years and then staying in that house, you're not gonna have misbehaving people in a garage apartment in your backyard or in your room.
It helps people afford houses to live with.
Yeah.
You need that.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, I, I did that. Um, but the thing is, is if they can afford to build it, I'm sure they can last two years until they can get that damn temporary.
I disagree. I, I, I have friends that built houses in this, in this town, and they need, they needed a way to help offset those costs immediately, so.
So I ain't gonna separate, uh, people coming in and saying, yep, we'll live in this house, and, uh, and then, um, and of course, that's an enforcement issue too. They live there for, for, uh, and get the, get the short-term rental. And then they decide they're gonna move over to another place, and then they should long-term rent that, and then, you know, it's it's not easy. What we have set up now is better than the, than that. Uh, and if we do short, if we're gonna do short-term rentals in this house, I, I think what's working now is working. And we have, uh, a few people that are abusing, if, if we have people abusing the system, then why not have the people that want to build a house and live there, or, or want to own a house in Minterne? They can be a primary residence, and that's what we want anyway. And then, and they, I, I, I just think that's, you gotta keep the two-year limitation on it, because it just feels like it could be, I don't know how we could track that.
I, I will just say that I'm sure there's a way to do whatever the council would like to see done. Uh, it does become a, a matter of bandwidth, but no doubt there, there are ways to do whatever the council is wanting to achieve.
Right now, we're just talking about just changing the order around. I mean, it's, I don't see a big deal on it, really, I mean.
Okay, let me just get a feel, take the temperature.
You, you have to get a license, this license anyway, so that's your enforcement.
Well, we already.
See if, see if you're living there or not, you know?
You come with three things, apparently, that we all agree or disagree with. One, you want this two-year provision when you're talking about the entire unit. Two, you don't want to inflict the two-year provision for a situation where it's a component of the home, a section of the home. So I would insert that you still inflict that two-year provision in regards to the entire unit. And then three, is a limit on total short-term rentals in the community, whatever that is. As of right now, it's fifty. So realistically, that would be the guidance, which is for an entire, single-family unit, two-year primary residence. I use the term primary residence, because going back to the example Mike pointed out, the intent is to provide long-term rental or primary residence. That's, that's the reality of the situation in this valley, because otherwise, are we gonna have folks that can work on Vale Mountain, up at the Cantina, whatever, living in that home? No. You're gonna have somebody that just shelled out two-point-four-five million dollars at Minterne North, not necessarily what we're all driving for, to support the local workforce. The second provision does support the local workforce, plus the family that can afford the two-point-four-five million. And then last but not least, in accordance with the survey, we are limiting total short-term rentals within the community of any flavor.
I would vote for that. Those changes.
I forgot what the last one was, I didn't really catch.
This is the pre-existing cap number that we have.
Fifty, ten percent of what it was.
So that was even on the thing.
I'm, I'm aware of that. I'm driving at, we're all, we're hemming and hawing over this piece.
If we're gonna change one little word, I'd like to change the number to five.
That's your vote?
Yeah.
Five, got it.
Also, I'd act the five.
I don't know what.
I think if, if we're in like.
Which one's proposing as the third option? Yes, they build a house, they do a long-term rental, and they maintain.
Primary residence.
And then there's STR and whatever.
Not using the term long-term rental, it is a primary residence for a minimum of two years.
Also, they are living in the house.
No, primary, it is a primary residence. Because conceivably, I go, I buy, and I build a house, I flip it around, I turn it into a long-term rental. It is not my primary residence, it is somebody else's, and it's achieving the other goal, which is housing in the valley. With me? It's not short-term rental, it is a primary residence for a family, for a group of individuals, whatever. But the objective is met, and the objective is housing, not short-term rental. So that's why I'm using that term, primary residence.
Yep.
Same with provision two, as Eric.
Idea, you're, you're saying there's not gonna be a short-term rental with that in that scenario, or are you?
It could after two years.
Provision, provision two, provision two, the only time you're gonna answer it is short-term rental is you're using it as a primary resident and a component of that house. In your case, the garage, in the case of Brian's, I'm not sure, a bedroom, or a lock-off, whatever, or as Eric did it. Then sure, you can come and apply for a short-term rental for that piece, assuming in accordance with provision three, which is the total number of short-term rental licenses that we've already agreed to, is available. Okay, still has to be a primary residence for a minimum of two years.
So before we can short, before any short-term rental happens on the lot?
Oh.
No, 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 no.
You're saying no matter.
Provision one, provision one, primary residence, ten years.
Okay, yes.
If you want to turn around and use that entire house as a short-term rental, don't bother coming and asking for two years. Provision two, provision two, let me finish. Provision two, you buy that house, it still has to be a primary residence for two years, but you want to rent out a room, rent out the top of the garage, whatever. You can come and apply for that, as long as you're not applying for the entire residency of short-term rental.
I don't understand why you have to wait two years.
You don't, you don't. I'm telling you, it's still got the hope. One is the whole house. Two is one piece of the house. You still have to have.
Own it and live there, you can right away rent it out, rent out a room.
Yes, you can apply for a short-term rental, yes, yes.
But the way Tom's, if I'm correct, you don't have to own and live there. Somebody, some other family can use it as their primary.
It still has to be a primary residence.
For somebody.
For somebody.
Okay.
Yeah, and then three is that the, the, use the term Brian said, cap, or quota, or whatever our total number that we've agreed, which right now is ten percent or fifty.
Whichever's less.
Whichever's left.
I'll throw number four in there too. We have to have adequate parking foot.
That's in the code.
Make sure that though.
I think that makes sense.
Well, you always have it on number three, but you're saying, okay, on number three, they build the, the primary residence.
No, no, three, no, three is none of those, three is what already exists, which is our number.
The fifty.
Ten percent or fifty or less. That's still.
Yeah, we should be talking about three.
I'm aware of that, but we keep circling around, you guys are.
Okay, number two, number two then, you, they built a house, it's a primary residence, they long-term lease that out, they have to wait two years for it, like in short-term.
No, that's number one.
And then they can short term the entire house?
Number one is what you just said. Two years.
Yeah.
Whole domicile.
Okay.
Number two, two years, you still have to have primary residence, but you're asking for, uh, it, this is killing me, because it's what you just argued you wanted, which is a component of the house, a room, a garage.
What is it, two years have anything to do with that?
You, you still have to maintain that residence.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be better just to create two classes of short terms, one is a whole house, and one, I mean, I just did. I just did, so that's, yeah, that's like a public discussion thing, I think we did.
This is gonna be a ten minute item, we've been here for, what, forty-five minutes? You are killing me to say that right now.
That's, that's why I said it.
Anyway, um, you are the primary proponent of that.
Quickly on the other, I-
I finally got what you're saying, I'm behind it.
Yes.
I think I'm there, I just don't know how to do it.
It's not rocket science, it's exactly what you guys have been arguing about for well over ten minutes.
No, forty-five.
Yeah. I'm just giving you, because we might as well get ahead of the game, instead of giving staff, okay, here's a little bit of guidance. All right, we'll see you next time, come back, here's some more, this is ultimately what we're all arguing we want. These three items.
Do you guys understand what he's saying, or?
Well.
Clarify.
Yeah.
Okay, in my own words, cause I think I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get one of them wrong. So, an ordinance that prior to receiving a short term rental permit for an entire house.
Two years.
The house must have been lived in by the owner for two years as their primary place of residence.
No.
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 The house has to be utilized as a, as a-
As a primary residence.
Yes. Yeah, goes back to your, goes back to your point of long term rental.
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah. And then as far as that, it takes-
Why did they, actually, why did they use it as their primary residence for only three months, and then somebody else takes the next three months? And then the next person takes one month as a primary residence.
That's, that's all the short term rental then.
Okay, so you mean, they need to rent it for at least a year?
Sure, we can throw all that in, we're just trying to drive a basic policy.
Okay, so, number one, an ordinance that prior to receiving a short term rental permit for an entire house, a house must have been lived in by the owner as their primary residence, or have been a long term rental as a primary residence for two years.
Yeah, I'm agreeing.
Then, a sh- if you live in it, another, if the owner has it as their primary residence without waiting two years, they can apply for a short term rental permit of some portion of the property.
Correct.
Yes. Maybe a third, something like that.
Again, that's up for approval process.
Doesn't that open it back up to speculation again? Well, but you're, you're, the owner has to live in it, I mean, it has to be their primary residence, yeah.
There's still this two year provision.
Okay.
And then three already exists.
Can we draft this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Did that work? I, like, look at Vale's code when you're drafting it, cause I'm not sure this is the most.
We can play it live, then, yes. If we have more votes for a future agenda item to discuss this, that's fine, but I can't, we're not dealing with that. I should've said that forty-five minutes ago, I guess.
I didn't see the words can worms written on the last item, but S T R, can of worms.
Okay, so.
Did I close it?
Yeah, yeah, okay, so anyway, do we have a motion?
Just some discussion.
Okay, we have, okay, raise your hand if you're, what this solution is, is what you want.
I'd be okay with it.
Okay.
Five years. I'd be okay with five years too.
Any future agenda items?
Motivation, die.
The council at public comment was wanting to consider a future agenda item for discussion of the thirty foot river setback.
Yes.
Are there four of you?
So we have four, yes, so that's.
Thank you.
What's the, what's the next one, we talked about water moratorium for a future agenda. Water moratorium.
They wanna know when they're talking about the water moratorium again?
We will be bringing, uh, in February, an ordinance before the council codifies in your code.
Second meeting in February.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Technically. Motion by, wait a second. Got Tom?
Brian, Brian.
Brian. All favor?
I am.
Pose.
This is a-
Yeah, my-
Run.